Good morning, welcome to the June 23 Board of Supervisors Budget Hearings. And would you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. To the republic which stands united nations and our individual liberty and justice.
Roll call, please.
Supervisor Pine.
Here.
Supervisor Horsley.
Here.
Supervisor Slocum.
Here.
Supervisor Tissier.
Here.
President Groom.
President, thank you. Do we have any public comment, Madam Clerk? Okay, so we will go to Measure A discussion.
Good morning, Madam President, members of the Board, Mr. Malby, Mr. Byers. There are two Measure A items that are on the Board's agenda today. One of them is to approve three contracts with Samaritan House, We Hope, and Second Harvest Food Bank. These are continuing initiatives that the Board has approved as part of the allocation plan. For Samaritan House, it's for emergency housing assistance, and that's with all eight core service agencies. Samaritan House is the lead agency, and this is for assistance for individuals and families at risk of becoming homeless. And then the second contract is with We Hope, and this is for the operation of the year-round homeless shelter in East Palo Alto. And then the third one is for Second Harvest Food Bank. I'm sorry, this one is new. Second Harvest Food Bank had submitted a letter of intent, and the Board did approve a million pounds of food, as well as modifications to existing distribution sites. And, I'm sorry, this is under the regular agenda if everyone is looking for it in their packets.
Actually, it didn't show up on the paper one, it's on here.
It's item number three. I apologize.
Oh, there it is. Got it now.
It's item number three. So those are the three contracts before you under item number three. And then there's also another item that is for the use of the district-specific funds. So this is the first four project requests that have come in from the Board districts. We have two from Supervisor Pine. The first one is round two of the Grand Avenue Library improvements. So the basic plan has been completed for the city of South San Francisco with the Grand Avenue Library. The city went out and requested community input on additional improvements to Grand Avenue Library, and they've come back with a second round request for Measure A. And this is for a number of enhancements to the Grand Avenue Library to serve one of our low-income communities in the county. And this is for $500,000, and the city will match the $500,000 for this particular project. The second one is for the countywide dental assessment. This is with Oral Health Coalition. Again, this is another letter of intent that was submitted to do a countywide dental assessment and strategic plan. The Coalition has raised or has committed $45,000 of the $75,000 that is needed, and this request is for the remaining $30,000 to do the assessment. And the health system will facilitate this assessment by doing the RFP and selecting the consultant that will be doing the plan or assisting with the plan. And the plan is anticipated to be completed by April of next year. And then for District Three, we have the Cabrillo Unified School District. This is the school transportation pilot. It is a two-year pilot, and it is contributing to our priority around the coast side, connect the coast side. This is the county's comprehensive transportation management plan. The district is in need of $25,000 a year for the next two years to build the ridership that is needed to help make the program viable. So this is for two years at $25,000 a year. And then the last request is from District Four Supervisor Slocum. This is a matching funds that have been allocated by Santa Clara County in their budget for $50,000. This is for the mobile hygiene unit that was requested as part of the letter of intent process from We Hope in East Palo Alto. The mobile hygiene unit has showers and laundry services for our homeless population, and the $50,000 is to match what Santa Clara County has provided in their budget. So those are the four project requests that we have at this time. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
I don't have a question on those. I guess the question I have is, so moving forward, you know, we've gotten some requests for district monies. Can those come forward at any time?
Correct.
Okay, so just when they're ready with the whole package, we?
Yes, so in terms of timeline, what we've talked about with Board staff is that they can be brought at any Board meeting. We'll put them on the regular agenda, and then make sure that we're working with departments to get them in as contracts and MOUs as needed.
Okay, great, thank you.
So a motion to approve item three, which includes the district-specific as well as reauthorization of agreements with Samaritan House, Project We Hope, and Second Harvest Food Bank. So moved. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Faralis. We will go to Administration and Fiscal, the County Council, Mr. Byers.
Excellent, good morning. Madam President, and members of the Board, and my esteemed colleague here to my right, County Manager John Malby, thank you for the opportunity to address you here today on, to talk about the budget and the work of the County Council's office. As you know, I'm never shy about an opportunity to talk about what we do, as I'm very proud of each and every one of the 43 employees working very diligently and, I think creatively, efficiently, and collaboratively on the sixth floor of the Hall of Justice. I mean, I really can say without reservation that those guys on the sixth floor, they work as a team, and in large part because they care about the work that they do, and they care about each other. I do want to take a moment, though, to introduce my management team who is here today. I think you know my chief deputies, Kathy Miola, John Niblin, Paul Acata, and David Silverman sitting there in the second row. And we've also got our new Administrative Services Manager, Mark Hertz, who's sitting here in the second row, next to one of our summer interns. And Mark, we poached from the Sheriff's Office recently, and he's in the enviable position of having to replace Angel Puckett, who was a kind of an icon, worked at the county for 40 years, you know, had a very exemplary career. But Mark is, I can tell you, Mark has already distinguished himself, and I fully expect him to eclipse Angel's record of 40 years someday. And finally, I want to thank Mary Claire, who's been really supportive behind the scenes for our office, working with Mark and on our budget, so thank you, Mary Claire, appreciate it. So mine, is the PowerPoint going to work? Oh, there we go. So here's our mission statement. It's a lot of words, which perhaps could be stated more simply in four words. What's that?
I'm an attorney.
Yeah, but I'm an attorney. Well said. But if I were to say that more simply, it would be, you know, four words would be, you know, "Do a good job." Our goal is to provide high-quality legal services to our clients. You know, we want to be right, we want to be creative, and, you know, we strive to be responsive. And I think this management team over here in the audience works very hard to instill a culture in the office of delivering client-focused service. We have two surveys that we generate. The first survey, which is represented in here in box number one, we send to all of our clients every other year. Our goal is to get 95% of our clients to rate us good or better, and I am proud to report that we have achieved that goal. The second survey, which is represented in box number two, we just initiated this survey idea this fiscal year, and that is to immediately send a survey to affected clients after the completion of a piece of litigation. So for example, if the Sheriff's Office and one of their deputies has the unfortunate circumstance to have been sued, and they're both parties in a lawsuit, as soon as that litigation concludes, we will send a quick survey to that sheriff and his sheriff's deputy, who are parties to the lawsuit, about our performance. So we ask a series of questions, you know, and we want immediate kind of real-time feedback, you know, while the case just concluded, we want to kind of get the survey out while it's fresh in everyone's mind. We ask a series of questions, you know, were we strategic? Were we creative? You know, did we listen? Were we zealous in our representation? You know, were we professional? Do we present options? You know, do we keep you updated? Things of that nature. And I'm also happy to report that, you know, so far we've met, kind of met our targets in that survey as well. We've highlighted just a few, kind of a handful, I guess, of accomplishments in this slide. We, when you look at this list, I think you'll probably notice that our accomplishments are simply a piggyback on your accomplishments. This Board, you know, came up with great policy ideas, and as I like to say, you know, we're just the mechanics. You know, you tell us what kind of car you want built, and we try to build it to your specifications. So, you know, thank you for making us look good. Again, we just want to highlight a few accomplishments. First on the list is Measure A. In 2012, as you all know, we assisted in the drafting of the successful sales tax and addressed a lot of the complex legal requirements pertaining to this measure. And since then, we've been very involved in implementation of Measure A. And as you know, a lot of people thought Measure A was not possible, but, you know, this Board did, and it turns out you were right. Second item on that list, Lehman Brothers. Again, due to your, I think, your courage and conviction in aggressively pursuing a recovery of Main Street taxpayer money, we worked hard to claw back almost half, almost half of the $155 million of countywide money that was, you know, was lost when Lehman went bankrupt. And one of our strategies, as you all know, was to file a very, I think, novel lawsuit against the directors and officers of Lehman, as well as their external auditors, Ernst &amp; Young. And a lot of people kind of naysaid this lawsuit. They said, "That'll never work." And, you know, $16 million later, after settlements with both Ernst &amp; Young and officers and directors, I don't think anyone is saying that anymore. And so thank you for your courage and authorization for that lawsuit. And I think also a thank you to the Kuchet Law Firm for their, you know, we owe them, I think, a large debt of gratitude for their great work on that case. Third on this list, the County Massage Stores, I want to just call that out briefly. You know, the Board really created the perfect template or recipe for effective enforcement of illicit massage establishments. And last I checked, we are 11-for-11. There are 11 illicit massage establishments in the uncorporate area, they're all gone. And we've really encouraged the cities to kind of adopt that, you know, the secret sauce, and they are. Many of them are doing that, and it needs to be a countywide, you know, obviously, as you guys know, it needs to be a countywide approach. So I think that's going well. And then others on this list, you know, again, these are your policy initiatives, and we're just glad to be working on them. In terms of challenges, improving service levels to address greater demands for service in an increasingly complex legal landscape. Now, this is our challenge. Work demands are increasing, which I tell my staff they should take as a compliment. Clients will only call to seek help if we have proven to be helpful. And so more work is really a reflection of one's value as a lawyer. We want our clients to call, and they do. We're also busy, of course, because this Board and the County Manager are really on fire when it comes to kind of getting stuff done. I mean, you guys are taking on a lot of heavyweight issues, homelessness, affordable housing, early literacy, mental health, you know, drug companies, you know, sea level rise, these are some heavyweight issues, and the list goes on. And our job really is to be with you every step of the way. You know, you and the County Manager have been very supportive in ensuring that we have the adequate staff, that my office has the adequate staff to handle this increased legal work, so we do appreciate it. 2015 through '17 priorities, continue provision of first-rate client services in a cost-effective manner, of course, that's always our number-one priority, implementation of a new legal case management system and records digitization. We have leverage technology to increase our efficiency. We, within the last year and a half, we purchased a new case management system called ProLaw. I talked about it last year. And ProLaw has been, is really a vast improvement over our previous case management system. I mean, our email, our case notes can be integrated now into case files. We can work from our iPads at depositions and from remote locations. It's much more integrated. It's been really great and made our work a lot more efficient. Our numbers are pretty steady. There's not a whole lot to say about here. Our total sources are a little higher due to more revenue and adjusted billing rates. Of course, our requirements are higher as well because of increased salary benefits. Mine is a way to get the full screen? Okay, there we go. So in terms of the 2015 through '17 budget overview, I mean, these numbers are pretty steady. There's really not a lot to call out on this particular slide. And now I've reached the end. So last, I just want to wrap up by saying, again.
He doesn't like his living doing this.
Saying, yeah, exactly.
That's why he went to law school.
That's why I went to law school. So thank you and the County Manager for all of your support you've given to the County Council's office. You guys are a very satisfying group to represent, because, you know, you guys are very focused on doing the right thing. You're progressive in your ideas, you're very collaborative in your style. And so, again, thank you for all of your support, it's appreciated.
Questions, comments?
Just one comment. I think I've worked with each one of your deputies on everything from the Coalition for Safe Schools and Communities all the way to district elections, and I think you're right, you have a great team, and I think you have served the county in an exemplary manner. So really thank you for your service.
Thank you Supervisor Horsley.
You should have asked for more when you get those kind of compliments.
Probably would have killed you. You haven't taken action yet.
Anyway, thank you as well. You guys do a lot of heavy lifting. It really, truthfully, at the end of the day, it makes us look good, so thank you.
You guys are not only great lawyers, but you have incredible skill to help move big and complicated projects forward. And that's, in addition to your incredible legal talents, I just find you guys to always kind of be, you know, helping complex processes move forward. And that's a hard thing to do in the public sector, and you and your team are really unique in that way. You know, I just had just one little question of curiosity. You know, sometimes I forget that you serve other clients other than us. And you still serve most of the school boards, right?
Yeah, that's correct. We represent, I think, 22 out of 24 school districts, and as well as many special districts. So we have, you know, many external clients.
Is that where the, that's the other income, right? Because you bill them.
Correct, yeah, I mean, for the school districts alone, we bring in roughly, I want to say about $1.3 to $1.4 million in revenue each year. So that's been just a great partnership, and so.
And roughly speaking, how much of your team's time, you know, kind of go to the?
External clients.
Yeah.
You know, I haven't actually done the calculations, but it's a lot, no one's doing exclusively external clients. It's kind of a part-time for many lawyers. So if I were to sort of add it all up, I would, my best guess is it'd be probably three to four FTE if you were to add it all up. But I haven't actually done that calculation. But of course, we, you know, we get the revenue to support it, and this Board supports. I know how important supporting education is to this Board.
By any event, I'm going to make a resolution that we have no lawyer jokes today.
Things too late.
Come on, come on.
John, I would thank you, but it's already been done very eloquently by Supervisor Horsley and Tissier. But I want to thank the folks out here that really do the work.
That was a lawyer joke.
Working with John and David and the rest of the team is just, it's a pleasure, because they don't throw up roadblocks. I like it that they always say, "Well Supervisor, we'll defend you either way." And.
To your last dollar.
Yeah. I just think it's an amazing team, and I appreciate it and recognize them and thank them.
Yeah, ditto from me. You know, the other thing is when you're in a meeting and there's something contentious going on, and you look over and you have all the confidence in the world that you will help us, and that's the best feeling.
Thank you for the great comments, appreciate it.
So we need, no, we note that at the end of the thing. Thank you very much, Mr. Byers. We're going to go to the County Manager, Clerk of the Board.
Madam President, members of the Board, the County Manager Clerk of the Board budget can be found under Administration and Fiscal on pages five-nine through five-twenty-two. This year, for fiscal year 15-16, the budget total is $10.8 million, which represents a $1.6 million increase. The net county costs will be increasing by approximately $400,000. In fiscal year 16-17, the total requirements will be $10.9 million, representing a $154 million increase, and an increase in the net county cost of the same amount. Primary reason for these changes in the budget are the negotiated salary and benefit increases and the addition of one management analyst position as part of the services for the SWAG program, which is funded through Measure A, and of course, approximately $800,000 in federal money that I want to again thank Mr. Calhoun for working so hard to secure. Also, we will be adding a communications specialist position that will work with the Office of Sustainability on their public outreach and education efforts in the coming year. The budget also represents the transfer of four permanent, three agile, and one extra help position into the new Office of Sustainability. Also, there's additional funding for grant writing services and additional contributions to the Arts Commission. Board has any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
One question on the Arts Commission, what's the total amount that we are funding them at? Jim, do you have a, Peggy? There are Peggy's.
55.
We're adding to the 55.
We're adding $34,000.
Right, we had.
It's a total of $89,000.
Okay, 89. You know, I have some concerns about that. You know, I actually talked to the Arts Commission, and they had originally put in for $125, and I guess we've cut them back to some extent then.
But we're adding to their budget, we're not cutting their budget down.
Well, I know that, but they had grants in the past that they had lost, so I'd actually like to have their budget at $125,000 as opposed to your proposal.
Could add that to the list.
I'd make a comment if I may. I've been working with the Arts Commission for a couple of years now, as has Judah Tomasoff in my office, and we did ask Ms. Jensen and Mr. Malby to accept the $125,000, and they chose not to for a variety, not bad reasons, but they just chose not to. And so I literally, I would also be supportive of going back to their initial thing. They have, in the last three years, I mean, we were about, three years ago, we were very close to just eliminating the whole arts program in this county. And I thought that was, some of, also you agree with, but I thought that was a bad idea. And so one of my staff members has been doing an awful lot of work to assist the Arts Commission to move into the area that was suggested they move to. And so I think that they have done a good job. And I think that we, you know, our office will continue to work with them, because I believe that culture, you know, culture is a very important part of this county, and the county should lead the way in supporting of culture.
And also think that a lot of the additional funding actually goes to grants to schools.
It does.
I just think it's really important, and glad for the support from Supervisor Groom in any case.
I just have a question about the commissions. Do we have any kind of a chart as to how we support the different commissions?
We could provide that chart.
I think it'd be helpful, you know, because I sometimes think some of them get money, some don't, and some have been asking for it to do some outreach, like the Commission on Aging and all. And I don't know that we've actually given money, because they get money through the Health Department.
Right.
But I don't know how much that is, and so I just wonder if we could get a breakdown.
And there are really two pieces to that support. One is direct financial support, as in this case, the other is indirect support through having staff work with them.
Right, exactly.
I think Ms. Jensen wants to make a comment.
I just wanted to respond briefly. Peggy Jensen, Deputy County Manager, I'm also, excuse me, the liaison with the Arts Commission with Judah Tomasoff. And one of the things that the Commission has focused on is supporting arts in the schools. They give out grants of $100 to teachers, to schools that have a high level of subsidized lunch programs. Last, the first year they gave out about $1,200, last year it was over $7,000. So the program is expanding. I just wanted to ensure that the Board knew that there is a focus on the schools. They also give out grants to local arts groups. They had funding from the Hewlett Foundation, that funding has gone away. So while they've been giving out, they gave out $42,000 in grants this year. Next year, they'll only have $22,000 to give.
I wanted to echo Supervisor Tissier's point about the kind of overview of our commissions generally. We're fortunate to have all these commissions, and, but I often wonder kind of how we kind of manage them, because, you know, we wanted to be a productive experience for the members, and we have different levels of support for different types of commissions, which I'm sure is appropriate. But, you know, I just wonder whether we need to bring a little more, there are things we might be able to do to, you know, see if we could kind of just improve the whole dynamic with our commissions. I guess I'm not being very, very specific, but it might be a good project potentially for the County Manager's office to take on over the course of the year, is kind of the state of the commissions, you know, how are resources allocated, how can we leverage them better, something of that nature.
Why don't we add that to our list and do a report back probably this fall, in which maybe we might do it as a workshop, where the Board can spend a couple of hours and simply focus on Boards and commissions.
Good idea.
Madam President, could I ask a quick question? I know Mr. Calhoun was working on a sort of an inventory of Boards and commissions, and it struck me in my experience that some had bylaws and work plans and those kinds of things, and some were very good about Brown Act, and some maybe not so much. And then putting out their agenda in advance of the meeting and those kind of things. Could you or Mr. Calhoun give us an update? Could you or Mr. Caligy give us an update on all that body of work that's been going on, or?
Why don't we include that in the report?
Sure. If, if you'd like to include it in the report later, that'd be fine. But thank you.
Okay. Anything else?
That concludes the County Manager Clerk of the Board budget.
And we'll go to the Board of Supervisors budget.
The Board of Supervisors budget, um, again, under Administration and Fiscal, can be found on pages five dash one through five dash seven. For fiscal year sixteen, the total requirements are four point eight million, which represents a fifty-one thousand dollar increase over the previous year. For fiscal year seventeen, the total requirements will be four point nine million, uh, representing, um, a hundred and fifteen thousand dollar increase over the prior year. These changes are due entirely to the increase in salary and benefits for staff in your offices.
Comments?
I think we do an excellent job.
Okay, anybody else?
Twenty-five percent increase.
Okay, that'll do that. Grand jury.
The, um, next budget is the grand jury's budget that can be found on pages five dash one thirty-nine through five dash one forty-two. As you know, this is a mandatory, um, budget that is required by statute. Uh, the grand jurors are selected by the Superior Court and work under the guidance of a Superior Court judge through the course of their investigations during the year. For fiscal year sixteen, the total requirements are, um, one hundred and twelve thousand dollars, which represents a four hundred and forty-two thousand dollar decrease. And for fiscal year seventeen, one hundred fourteen thousand dollars, which is approximately a two thousand dollar increase. The reason for the decrease is that the, um, audit, which had been shown historically under the grand jury, has, at the request of the grand jury, been removed and placed separately in the budget. There are no other changes to the grand jury budget.
Questions, comments? All right.
Do you want tentative approval of these for the morning session?
Yeah.
I'll move tentative approval of, uh, these four departments.
Okay, with, uh, with the.
Can we give you just the report back that you've asked for, just to make sure we've got everything?
Yeah, I, I have Arts goes to one twenty-five chart with support for commissions, including staffing and dollars. And that would also include the state of the commission that Mr. Caligy is working on. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I just make one comment, uh, just about the County Manager and your team? I, I think you've really amassed an excellent team. Your department heads have really shined. And going through the budget, uh, the things that, uh, we have done, really, maybe to some extent we've set policy, but the leadership and your whole staff has been incredibly helpful. And I think, um, that I'm really proud of all that we've accomplished over the past year. And I, I'm really proud of the leadership that you've brought to the county as well, as well as your, all of your management analysts and your whole team.
Ditto. Yep. Anybody else want to add anything? Okay, we're gonna adjourn, or not adjourn, we're gonna come back at one thirty for, uh, Criminal Justice and Administration and Fiscal. I'll just stay right here. Okay, we're gonna begin the afternoon budget session with Sheriff Monks. Welcome.
Members, Mr. Malpe, Mr. Byers, and Mr. Sacco. Let's see, where are we here? There we go. I'm, uh, pleased to present our, um, to your budget today. And, uh, start off by just, uh, briefly covering the Sheriff's Office mission. As you can see there, it's, uh, we have many and varied responsibilities, but, uh, most of, most important of which is to protect life and property and preserve the public peace. In terms of our headline measures, uh, we, um, continue to have high rankings from our customer satisfaction. Albeit, we don't, uh, get, uh, tons of those back. We've tried some outreach, and, uh, I think other departments have the same, uh, challenge in terms of getting. We, we certainly hear from people that aren't happy. It's the people that are happy that, uh, tend not to, uh, express their, uh, satisfaction. We, uh, have, uh, one of our headline measures is the, um, positive, uh, identifications through AFIS, CODIS, and NIBIN. Uh, as you might recall, those are the, uh, fingerprints, the, uh, DNA database, and the firearms database. Uh, so, uh, we continue to exceed our target on that. And, um, as, uh, I'm sure you know, those, uh, technological advances, especially in the area of, uh, DNA, have been, uh, very valuable in terms of, uh, solving, uh, crimes. Uh, we continue to enjoy success in our contract law enforcement relationships with the, uh, five cities that we serve. But most recently, uh, San Carlos, Half Moon Bay, and Millbrae. The, um, uh, the cities have been very satisfied with the service that we've provided, and we have, uh, I think assisted in helping those cities restore, uh, fiscal strength. Our partnership with Half Moon Bay also, uh, they completed their, uh, emergency operations center, uh, over there. And that has, uh, been a great partnership, because it's also provided a base of operations for us to provide, uh, emergency services on the coast side. And then, uh, in our Corrections Division, we have instituted the, uh, Case, uh, Assessment Tool, uh, which is used by probation. We're, we're doing that now through our case managers. And we are, uh, providing, we are doing that assessment on all of our, uh, sentence population. And, uh, that is, uh, helping provide better information with respect to, uh, working those folks into the Unified Reentry Program. And then we have completed our implementation of our new jail management system, which is gonna provide us and, uh, you with greater data with respect to our, uh, jail population. There are still some, uh, lingering, um, elements of that that yet to be, uh, installed. There were certainly challenges as we went through that process, uh, but it is going well. And, um, we're looking forward to the other county partners coming online and eventually being connected through the, uh, Justice Portal. So our, our forensic lab, we were one of seventeen in the country to be granted a fully funded NIBIN equipment upgrade. So that's going to, uh, give us greater capabilities with our firearms identification, uh, systems. Uh, our school safety efforts, uh, the efforts that were, uh, led by Supervisors, uh, Tissier and Horsley on the, um, after Newtown, uh, we continue to make progress with the school district and the police departments in terms of, uh, improving school safety. Uh, our Domestic Firearms Compliance Unit, thank you to, uh, your, uh, board for supporting the continued funding of our, uh, DV gun takeaway position. Uh, that continues to provide an important service to, um, victims of domestic violence, removing firearms from, um, um, people that are restrained through DV, um, restraining orders. In thirteen fourteen, uh, we took away a hundred and ninety-four guns. In fourteen fifteen, um, not including June, we took away a hundred and twenty-three guns. Our, um, Sheriff's Activities League continues to grow and continues to provide, uh, after-school summer activities for, um, over three thousand, uh, young people in our county. Uh, we've been successful in, in acquiring, uh, over four hundred thousand dollars in grants and, and private fundraising to support those programs. Uh, we've had up to ten thousand, uh, young people attend the different events that we've, uh, hosted there. And then, uh, we continue to be the fiduciary and the lead agency on the Northern California High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area and the Northern California Regional Intelligence Center. Uh, through their efforts, uh, they have, uh, removed about, uh, almost five hundred million dollars worth of illegal drugs and seized almost twenty million dollars in cash from, um, organized drug trafficking, uh, drug trafficking organizations. Continuing with our accomplishments, the Maple Street Correctional Center continues to, uh, uh, go, uh, on time and under budget. Uh, we, we still plan on completing the, uh, majority of the construction in December. With the addition of, uh, building out the Warm Shell, that particular aspect of construction will continue till June, probably. But, uh, the rest of the facility will be done in December. We are still on, on track to open that facility by March. And, um, uh, as we have discussed many times, uh, that will provide us with expanded opportunities for education and vocational training and, uh, uh, better, uh, settings for, uh, treatment and, um, uh, new things like, uh, family counseling, parenting programs, and, um, a much expanded, um, transitional housing capacity. Uh, some of the challenges that we are, are expecting are, uh, we have seen a continued, uh, change in our continued profile, uh, in, in our, uh, primarily our McGuire Correctional Facility. Uh, it's a increased sophistication of the inmates. We have, uh, seen increases in contraband, both weapons and, and, uh, drugs. And, um, so that has provided a, a challenge to our staff, but we are, uh, meeting that challenge. Uh, it has also changed the way that we house inmates. We have much more, uh, administrative segregation, much more single-person cells over there because of the need to not only, uh, keep, uh, gang, rival gang members, uh, away from each other, but also to, um, uh, for safety of the staff and safety of the inmates. We are, uh, continuing the work on our strategic implementation, uh, plan, which, uh, I know Supervisor Tissier's been very much involved in. We have, um, uh, been, uh, piloting new programs in McGuire in anticipation of, uh, moving into the, uh, Maple Street Correctional Center. Uh, we have a, a, a pilot pod going on right now where we are, uh, introducing new evidence-based programming. And we have, uh, rolled out our, um, our, um, case management model with our case managers so that we can do, um, more specific, uh, plans for our, our folks and work closely with Service Connect and with probation and our other partners to do, uh, warm handoffs as we, uh, as people are leaving custody. Uh, we have some challenges in our forensic lab, uh, one of which is, uh, there are new federal mandates around DNA analysis, so we need to, uh, make some, um, um, additions and in, improvements in order to meet these, uh, new, uh, requirements. It's, um, a little beyond my scientific, uh, knowledge, but it has to do with the genetic markers. We're going from sixteen genetic markers to twenty-four genetic markers, so that's going to, um, require additional time. But again, DNA is, uh, uh, continues to be of major, um, benefit to us and to the community in terms of solving, uh, crimes. Uh, I'm sure you all, uh, heard about that, uh, Gypsy Hill case. We had the mass murder from the seventies that was identified via, uh, DNA analysis. So, uh, that continues to be, uh, valuable, not only in solving current crimes, but going back and solving, uh, cold cases. In our support services area, uh, we continue to, uh, strive to, uh, hire, uh, people who, uh, reflect the communities that we serve. So, um, both in the area of, uh, female recruitment and hiring, and, uh, people of color and, and, uh, bilingual, uh, candidates. Uh, we did, uh, something Supervisor Groom attended, our, uh, women's, um, event that we did to try to, uh, recruit women. From that, we had a, a boot camp where we had a number of women go weekly through a, um, um, kind of a, a training and, and, uh, acclamation to, uh, public safety, a career in public safety. I'm pleased to report that from that, uh, boot camp effort, uh, we hired six women, uh, into the Sheriff's Office, both as correctional officers and, uh, as, um, civilian staff. So, uh, we, we want to continue our efforts in that area. In our Court Security and Transportation Bureau, uh, we are, uh, we have a upgrade to the security system of this building underway. Uh, we're doing that in conjunction with the Superior Court. We're utilizing, uh, trial court funding, uh, security money, uh, for that. So that's gonna include upgrades to cameras and alarms and things like that, so, uh, it should make this, uh, facility, uh, safer. And we continue to place a high priority on the transportation of prisoners in a safe and cost-effective way. We've done some, uh, things with the use of correctional officers where we've been able to put correctional officers into some of our, um, non-transportation positions within that unit that frees up deputy sheriffs for the actual transportation, uh, gun-carrying assignments. Again, I mentioned the, uh, DN, uh, the DNA making that transition to the, uh, twenty-four gene, uh, requirement. We are, uh, underway in our Operations Division, uh, outfitting all of our cars with new computer systems and in-car video. Uh, so we have had some in some of our contract cities, but our plan is to, uh, install, uh, video cameras in all of our patrol cars and the attendant, uh, computer systems and, uh, technology that goes along with that. That, that system we've identified the vendor and that, that is underway, uh, as we speak. And, uh, thanks to, uh, your support and funding, we have implemented our PERT team. That's the Psychiatric Emergency Response Team. Consists of a Deputy Sheriff and a, uh, clinical psychologist from, uh, BHRS working side by side. And, uh, they are working in our jurisdictions to, uh, kind of case manage some of the chronic mentally ill cases that we have. And, uh, we think that this is an excellent, uh, addition to the CIT program that, that we have in place. But it gives us a capacity to work some of these, uh, tougher situations, long-term, chronic mentally ill folks, uh, with the overall goal of avoiding, uh, conflict with the criminal justice system, whether, you know, keeping them out of jail, but also avoiding, uh, violent confrontations, which is, uh, one of the unfortunate, uh, things that happen in those situations. Uh, in the area of emergency services, we are adopting the new Countywide Emergency Operations Plan. Uh, we are working with the, uh, departments to train key department staff members. Rayna Faralis has been, uh, very, uh, involved and supportive in, in those efforts. Uh, we're having, um, I think they're weekly or. We're having, I think they're weekly or by monthly, meetings of members of, of various departments in an effort to really bolster our ability to respond in the event of a disaster. We're certainly excited about the new building project that's underway with the new emergency operations center. We want to make sure that all county staff will be ready to staff positions in that. We recently had a, the fair, disaster fair, not only the one that Supervisor Tissier does countywide, but we did one for the employees here, and it was very well attended, and again, part of our efforts to raise awareness amongst employees. And we're also in the process of coordinating the upgrade of the hazard mitigation plan. So, every city in the county is required to update their hazard plan, as is the county. We're working with the cities. We're going to update the county plan, and then we're going to utilize some, some of the money that we get from the state to help cities fund their upgrades of that, so they will be annexes to the overall county plan. Our priorities in the corrections division, obviously the biggest thing that we have on our plate is transitioning to the Maple Street Correctional Center, or MSCC, the new acronym, so that's, that's a big deal. I mean, we're, we're, our jail planning unit, in addition to managing the construction efforts, are working, as we speak, on policies and, and, and a movement plan and all the things associated with moving staff and inmates from the old Maple Street Center over to the new center. Along with that, through our strategic implementation plan, we are working on the types of programs that we'll be offering there, you know, fine tuning the continuum of care model, our part in the, the countywide integrated reentry plan. And then we, thanks to the funding that the board provided, we have started the process of integrating the two facilities from a technology standpoint. So, we have a number of things, for example, the video visitation that will be occurring at the new facility, so people in McGuire will visit their loved ones via video technology. The loved ones will be over at the new facility. But also when it comes to things like the control panels and all that, it's all going to be integrated and matched, so in the event of emergency or breakdown, we could actually run one facility from the other facility, so there'll be a lot of benefits in that integration effort. In our investigations area, we are adopting and working hard to institute a intelligence-led policing model, which we have, through realignment and through some other sources, we have analysts on board, and what we're trying to do is to make sure that we are operating smart, that we're taking advantage of the various technologies that are out there. As the host agency of the Northern California Regional Intelligence Center, we have access to lots of, you know, powerful tools in terms of analyzing crime trends and things like that. We want to make sure that how we put our resources out in the field is driven by data and by information, and so we are trying to integrate that in all aspects of what we do. So, we have stood up a intelligence or a, a crime analysis unit, and we want to utilize that on an ongoing basis in both patrol and investigations. We are in the process of implementing the new human trafficking and commercially sexually-exploited children's program, again, thanks to your funding from Measure A. We have a new position that will be coming on board. It'll be working out of the San Carlos building, and they will help guide not only our efforts, but countywide efforts in the area of, of human trafficking. We have a, I'll talk about it in a few more slides, a countywide task force that comes together on a monthly basis, so this position will help coordinate that and also some outreach in the community. Also through Measure A, our school safety program, you were very supportive in, in funding our two additional school resource deputies, which are serving and helping to expand our efforts in school safety. So, this ties in both with our efforts from the, beyond Newtown, in terms of the, the big five and, and educating school staff and kids about response plans and common terminology and, and all that stuff, but also when it comes to, you know, some of the programs that we do, the anti-drug, anti-gangs, the presence on the, on the campus, which adds to the safety of those campuses, and then a number of programs that we do in conjunction with Measure A, again, you've helped fund the Coastside District Coordinator, so that has given us additional capacity for the coast. As we all know, the coast is a unique community, both demographically but also geographically, so that in conjunction with the new Coastside Center has allowed us to make great strides in terms of disaster preparedness out there. We did the partnership with the city, so the city's funding half of that position. Measure A's funding the other half, so it's, it's a real win-win, and it gives us that additional ability to train, exercise, and increase citizen participation out on the Back to human trafficking, again, from Measure A, you provided two hundred thousand dollars each fiscal year. Again, we're going to have this coordinator that will help collaborate and coordinate the efforts between sheriff's office and the police departments, but also there's a lot of outreach that needs to occur in the community. Training amongst hotels and motels, train their staff how to identify and to what to do, how to report suspected human trafficking, helping to coordinate the monthly operations that we're doing, and then there'll be additional work in, in anticipation of the Super Bowl next year, so that, that individual will be very busy and will help to increase our ability to respond and investigate these types of offenses. We get to our overall budget. This is, again, fifteen sixteen. I think you've seen a lot of these, so I don't need to walk you through them, but that is our fifteen sixteen budget overview. Our positions go from seven sixty-two to seven seventy, and then next year sixteen seventeen. The position count stays flat, and I think the only percentage changes are probably That concludes the sheriff's office one. I'd be happy to take questions on that, or if you'd like, I'll go right into the message switch, and then we can do that. You want to?
Go ahead.
Okay. Usually a highlight of my budget presentation is the message switch. I'll kind of breeze right through it. Good to know that the, the budget is in good position and there's no, no problems. We are looking downstream in, not, not this year, but the next year, we're going to be challenged a little bit due to salary increases, but for now, it's fine. You can see, you know, there's some updates to various equipment stuff. Chris Flatmo is here to answer any questions if you have any, but that's it. Right, Chris?
Sir.
Okay. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
What do you say?
I don't have any questions. I guess maybe one is, it was a recent thing, San Francisco's crime lab, they've always had problems. Yours has been outstanding. Do you have any backlog of rape kits, or is that up to date?
Alex?
We're up to date, maybe three cases are being assigned, but we don't have a hundred and a thousand.
Yeah. If you could call them up and help, never mind. But in any case, I just want to appreciate the, the work that you, the department does. Of course, I think the department is great, and they do a fabulous job, and are the best police agency in the state of California. But I, but I guess just the firearms compliance unit, that is just a phenomenal record. I really appreciate your creating that PERT unit, and I remember I was there when you went and talked to those, the people out of Moon Ridge, the human trafficking program. I know that Supervisor Tissier was really involved in that, and of course, you've worked with us on that Coalition for Safe Schools and Communities, and I want to thank you for work on Office of Emergency Services on the coast. I like to call out Lieutenant John Muncy. I work with him pretty extensively in the coast side. He does a great job for us, and I want to commend the entire department. Most of my district has sheriff's department deputies patrolling, and they do a fabulous job, and they're always extremely responsive to both me and my staff, and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Let me see if I can follow up as a cheerleader as well. No, I just want to say as well, on the school safety efforts, your office has done a tremendous job. They've worked very, very closely with behavioral health and the Office of Education. We've heard kudos from the Office of Education and others about how well it's gone off. They've really, really been able to expand it. They've really gotten to the point where they're, you know, it's really working, and they've actually utilized some of the efforts already from a couple incidents that have happened. The question I had, one on the forensic lab as well, are we, does San Francisco contact us? Are we helping them at all?
I don't think we're, are we doing anything with San Francisco?
We give them a lot of advice.
Do they take it?
There's a lot of people that work up there that used to work for us, and so we're always open to how we do things. We help them a lot with their accreditation bid that just recently happened. We're always open if they ever need any technical help or anything like that, so we are always talking to them.
Okay, great, great. And one other comment I want to make is also with your OES staff. They did a great job this year on the, as they do every year, but we had forty-one hundred people come through the first hour. It was incredible, and there were like ten thousand people by two o'clock. So, I mean, it was the biggest day they had for the fair. It was up like twenty-five percent, but, and everybody had to come through where disaster preparedness was, and it was really, really well attended. So, I really appreciate all the work. They did a lot more outreach this year. It just seemed like you saw signs everywhere this year, so I really appreciate the effort of your department.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a couple of quick things. I'm wondering, I read in here somewhere, maybe this is a question for Chris Flatmo, I'm not sure, but was interested in just learning a little bit about cyber threats and, you know, with all these attacks we've been reading about in the newspapers of late. Is that related to cyber threats in law enforcement, or is that a completely different topic?
Well, I'll let Chris speak to cyber threats here at the county. I know that through the NICRIC, the Northern California Regional Intelligence Center, they are doing a lot of efforts in the area of cyber, cyber threat. It is a big problem. It's a big problem for, you know, businesses being hacked, but that's kind of above our ability to respond. I mean, that's, that's done, you know, by the feds and such, but I know NICRIC is doing a lot in the area of cyber stuff. Chris, you want to speak to the county efforts, or what?
Just briefly, thank you.
Yes, sir. Should I start the two-mint button here?
I used to work with them.
Good afternoon. Honorable Board of Supervisors, Mr. Mulby, Mr. Zacco, Mr. Byers. My name is Chris Flatmo. I'm the IT manager for the sheriff's office. So, I'll talk a little bit about IT security in the county, but I'll defer almost all of that to John Walton in his presentation this afternoon, since it's under his umbrella of support. The county has a series of very dense firewalls, and it's, it's necessary because for some odd reason, even though most of our information is available through a Public Records Act, there's constantly attacks on our firewalls. For some reason, people think that we're a government agency that is in possession of a lot of secretive information. So, in order to be resilient, there's always updates to the software running these firewalls, and I believe ISD continues to do a good job with that. I'll leave you with a two, two couple of thoughts. One is, certainly in the sheriff's office, we pass around reminders. Whenever there's a phishing scheme or some kind of a cyber threat that's being proliferated through email, we send out emails ourselves internally, just heads up, and then we leave people with reminders. Don't use your credit card online if you can avoid it. And then finally, the county has had a very good position for years, which is we're not an e-commerce shop, which means if you do use your credit card to conduct county business, like if you pay your property taxes, you will rocket it off to a professional clearinghouse, officialpayments.com, for example. They're the keeper of all the credit card information. We don't keep that information behind the county firewalls. It's not in our data stores. That way, we're not susceptible to those kind of hacks and won't be caught up in that. I think that's a good practice.
Thank you.
Okay.
Couple of little brief things. I know there are a lot of serious programs and projects, the jail construction, the PERT training, the trafficking, and on and on and on. It's an impressive list of things that your team deal with, but I just wanted to single out SAL, the SAL program. I'm just constantly amazed at the SAL program and what they do for kids, especially in North Fair Oaks, East Palo Alto, and of course, other parts of the county, but those are the parts that I'm most familiar with. Also, the community policing unit, the KARON unit, they, they've done a magnificent job, I believe, and even I have to give a kudo to Carlos Bolanos, because every time I send Carlos an email, try not to bother you, Sheriff, but I send them to Carlos, he's always, I'm so impressed with his responsiveness and how quickly he gets back with answers, and so I appreciate that, and thank, thank you both for being so responsive. I appreciate it.
That's because Carlos has a to-do list, and I don't. He writes it on the to-do list. No, but just thank you for those comments, and, and when it comes to SAL, Carlos actually has been really the driving force behind that. He's been chaired the, the board and, and really helped to bring a lot of the passion and effort that he had when he built the PAL in Redwood City to our SAL program and taking it to a new level, so very fortunate to have his leadership in that area.
Thanks, Sheriff Muncy, for your presentation.
You've had no shortage of large initiatives to, for you and your, you and your team have had to manage and done that very ably. I had two questions about things that, you know, I just see in the, in the press from time to time, in the national press, and the first is body cameras for police officers. What's your current thinking about, about those?
I am, I have adopted a wait-and-see attitude. I, I want to wait until the, both the technology and the policy and privacy issues are addressed. I think that there may be some benefit to that, but what concerns me is, first of all, the cost is, is tremendous when it comes to storage, retrieval, and things like that. What, what is yet to be kind of, I think, settled is the whole privacy around the cameras. I mean, when do you use them, under what circumstances, and who has access to that, that video? So, when you go into someone's home on a domestic violence, for example, or a sexual assault of a, of a child, or, or anything that's really sensitive and difficult, having the camera running, you know, could cause a concern, a lack of trust, a feeling of invasion on the part of the, of the victim, the, the people that are there. And so, you know, things like that, I think, need to be resolved. Under what circumstances do you use them? How is it used? Who has access to it? I think that there are some benefits. I mean, the, the cameras in the car, I think, you know, we're, that's a, a much more mature technology. It's been out for a long time. It's very beneficial. It helps both from a, you know, when something bad happens, you have a picture of it, but it also helps when there's a, you know, complaint or whatever, you can see what, you know, what, what really happened. The, the cameras on the body still, I think, need to be, there's, there's a lot of work, working groups that are working on that right now, so for now, I feel that we need to kind of wait and see how that gets shook out and how those policies get resolved, and then make a decision then.
Okay, good enough. And, and the other one that I, I see from time to time is, you see articles about new kind of predictive policing or predictive crime tools, and you, you'd mentioned that you're doing a lot with data, is, again, you just get your thoughts on those tools and where they are?
Sure, yeah. We, we are using some of that, so some of the products that we are producing from our crime analysis unit do look at things like time of day, week, day of the week, areas of activity. So, with, you know, recently we've had a big increase in auto thefts and, and theft from cars, so we've been doing some mapping on that and, and able to pinpoint areas, time of day, days of the week, so that, that type of stuff. And we, we hope to use that to, again, better direct those resources around that, and so, yeah, there's, that's part of our intelligence-led policing, you know, effort, is to, to become more data-driven and hopefully be able to... more data-driven and hopefully be able to, if not predict crime, at least get a higher probability of success through data.
Thanks.
Thank you very much, Sheriff. You know, I just wanted to add that I continue to hear nothing but praise from the cities that, with whom you are contracting services, how pleased they are, how responsive they are. They like the fact that there are more police officers on duty, more sheriff's officers on duties. So, I think that that's just, and the cities just seem to be very happy with that.
Thank you. And if I could just, could I just add one thing? I want to thank the board for your support through Measure A and ongoing support, as well as County Manager Malby, and just would like to acknowledge my team, my executive team, with UnderSheriff Carlos Bolanos, Assistant Sheriff Tricia Sanchez and Tom Gallagher, Stacy Stevenson, and all of our, you know, managers that helped put this budget together and all the nice things that you said about the Sheriff's Office is really a result of the work that they're doing and leading. And also, I know you're going to hear from the DA and others, but so much of what we do, too, is in conjunction with our District Attorney, our Probation Chief, Coroner, the whole public safety communications and all of our partners. So, I feel very fortunate to have those partners.
Sheriff, I just have one question. You know, as you drive around, you're in San Francisco and other places, they've got all these big banners about hiring police officers and things like that. How are we doing in the area of recruiting and hiring? Are we?
We're doing a good job. We, you know, we're in constant hiring mode. You know, we got the new positions for the new facility, so we are, it seems like every other week, I'm swearing people in. So, we've been doing a lot of hiring. We have enjoyed, I think, a, you know, we are sought out as a place to come work, so we've had a lot of laterals and a lot of other people that want to come work here. Part of it is because of the growth that we've experienced, part of it's the new facility, part of it is the outstanding people that work here, and, you know, the county is a good employer. And so, we are continuing that process, hiring both correction officers and deputy sheriffs, and we are confident that we're going to be on target to have our staffing plan that we've had in place now for eighteen months to two years will be able to get us ready for the new facility.
Thank you, and thank you to your team.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
We'll have District Attorney and District Attorney Wagstaff next.
Good afternoon. President Kroom, members of the board, Mr. Malby, Mr. Sacco, Mr. Byers. I am pleased to be able to speak to you this afternoon and talk about the District Attorney's Office, what we've accomplished, and where we are going on that line. I do want to start off by echoing what Sheriff Monks just said. Sometimes it isn't apparent to you, perhaps, if you haven't heard what goes on in other counties. The fact that the sheriff, the district attorney, the chief probation officer, that, and all components of the system work so well together is not a small item. I talked to many of my fellow DAs around the state. One only needs to read the newspaper about what goes on in the city and county to our north to know what it can be when people don't get along, when people are fighting and arguing. And instead, what we have here is a, it's truly a team. We really work well together. That's to the benefit of this county and its citizens, and I never underestimate the value that that has. So, I say thank you to them for that. It is, I really look forward to this, just as, you know, one of the things that was instituted by Mr. Malby, oh, was it a year or so ago, was the monthly reports to the board. And I can't tell you how much we enjoy doing that, because it's a chance, as I view it, to brag. You'll note I'm not putting in there our mistakes, as you would expect, but it is a chance. And I view today as a similar part to do that, because I have a great team. With me today are two people, I think many of you know, my Chief of Investigations, John Warren, who's been with us now for it's almost ten years in that, and then a new member of my team, Jolena Wang, who has become our, my chief financial person, who put this budget together. It's her first budget here. I stole her from Alameda County District Attorney's Office, where she had been for many, many years on that line. So, I'm very pleased to have them. Karen Guadati, my chief deputy, would be here, but she thought being on a beach in Portugal would be a little more fun. So, that is where she is today. The, so, District Attorney's Office, again, it's a division. We have just over one hundred and twenty-five people working for us, and the men and women of this organization are just wonderful. You, in meeting of the goals that we have to do, which is the classic one that everybody knows, prosecuting adult and juvenile offenders, serving our victims, enforcing our consumer and environmental laws, and providing legal and investigative support to all the other agencies through our investigations and doing our own investigations. That is our mission. I believe it is well performed. You can see the key indicators of where we are. This is a significant one. I thought you would find interesting, because we have been in a transition, of course, in criminal justice over the last, it's now four years, almost four years, and particularly since last November with Proposition 47, and we were very interested to follow the indicators. We're not done learning what we're going to learn in this arena, but what we do know, as you can see from the numbers, is that our filings of criminal cases are down about two thousand cases, and that's interesting. And I've talked, because again, we are not a self-generating agency. We prosecute what the law enforcement brings to us. There are some that we do on our own, but that's only a small portion. The vast bulk are what all our city agencies and the Sheriff's Office brings to us. And, now, we knew our felonies would go down with Prop 47. It's on about the par, we thought, would be about a third of our felonies would be misdemeanors and processed through misdemeanor court, and that has occurred. So, our misdemeanors are down, and that's a surprise. We thought they would go commensurately up, and it has not occurred. I've talked to the police chiefs and said, what's happening? Is this, because we certainly saw it, we've always seen a drop-off in our misdemeanor filings when times are very difficult, financial times. Police agencies have reduced staffs, reduced resources to conduct investigations, and misdemeanors, some of those perhaps hidden runs, don't get the attention that might otherwise exist. But that's not the stage we're in now. So, it's an interesting dilemma that we are studying with the chiefs and the sheriff to try and figure out what exactly is going on. We're only six months or seven months into Prop 47. It'll be very interesting to learn what occurs, because our experience is different than what they're seeing in other DA's offices around the state. So, we do remain, though, San Mateo County, as I always say in every address, we remain clearly one of the, I like to say the safest, but one of the safest counties in the state of California. I'll give you a telltale sign of that. You certainly know where our homicide rate was back going in the eighties and the early nineties. It was very high. It is, been over the last, I would call it, seven to ten years, it's been staying at approximately fifteen to eighteen homicides per year on that line, which is still too many for those and those families, but it's down far below the nineteen ninety-two sixty-five. We are so far, and not to jinx, I know in law enforcement, they always feel jinxed whenever you say this, but I don't believe in superstition, we've had four this year. And we're halfway through the year, and that's a good sign. I think it's a continuing sign that crime is continuing to be down. And I know the property crime is up, and the agencies are all working hard to try and lower the property crime, but that's when you see those numbers. That's really what is involved there. An ongoing study, that's actually, I can tell you, it's actually very interesting to study why that's happening. Is it due to our success efforts? Is it just the natural course? As Jim Fox always used to say, never take credit for when crime is down, because you'll get blamed when crime is up. So, I have followed that adage. The, our accomplishments in the last year, it was a good year for us. I think we certainly know with the graciousness that you showed you, and I thank all of you for the resources you gave us so that we could have a case management system, and we launched. On March thirtieth, the rocket ship took off, and we are climbing, we're going, we're going to break atmosphere, we're going to get into outer space, but our lawyers are all using it, because there is, as we said, there's only one train and everybody is on it. And it's tough, as it always is the first few months, getting used to it. They're all, my lawyers are saying they liked the old system before, they hated the old system, but everything seems better when you're looking forward, but they're getting used to it. It's going to be a great system. One of the primary purposes that you funded it was so that I could give you better statistics about what's going on in our county. It's going to meet that. When we get the report component, which is in, but once we get enough time, it's only two and a half months in now, we're going to be able to provide you with information right down into the bushes and weeds. It will be of great benefit, I think, to questions before I've said, no, we can't do that type of a thing. The Sunny Day operation, it's ongoing. We are in year two of it. It is, as we expected, it is, it's dragging along very slowly. There's a lot, I mean, there's well over ten, fifteen thousand pages of substantive police reports. The grand jury proceedings were five thousand, so it's moving slowly, but we're getting there. I am doing it with the resources that you have previously given me. I am not asking for anything new on that. It is, I have two prosecutors who are working at that, but that's not their full-time job, because nobody should be on one case full-time on that line. But it is making, we had our first plea of no contest today, not by one of the murderers, but by one of the people charged with the crimes, not non-murder, and he pled this morning and was sentenced to two years in state prison. So, out of the sixteen, we're down to fifteen. It's going to be a slow process, but it is successful. We're staying within the finances and the prosecution. We were fortunately assigned to Judge Lisa Novak. She's wonderful. She has got it organized. She will run that as efficiently as can reasonably be done. The other one is one that I don't want to go into great detail today, because I would like to come back to the board somewhere later this summer. I have talked with Michelle Duran of the manager's office. I would like to come back and talk to you about a program that we started on June first. This was a, it's called, it's DEJ on your board, it's Deferred Entry of Judgment. What it means is for the low-end misdemeanor crimes, that the people, rather than having a conviction that stays on their record, they enter a plea, they go through a program, we have contracted with a private company that most of the DA's offices who have this are using, and they go through a counseling session, they make restitution. If they do that, plus whatever other conditions the court puts on it, they get the case dismissed. The plea is withdrawn, and they get it dismissed. It won't be on their record. This is, I, this is a program we've studied for a bit. Mr. Fox started the study in nineteen eighty-three. So, we take our time when we do things in the DA's office, but we decided the time is now. It is where we are moving in this state in terms of reanalyzing what we're doing in justice. And while you know my reputation, of course, around the state is not for being soft-hearted, if there is a heart at all, in this arena, I do believe this is a good program, and I would like to come back and in greater detail provide you with documentation. We'll be a few months into the program then, and I can tell you the success that I believe it is going to have. The, our challenge is coming up. It is, on the fundamental, the integration with our criminal justice partners, since we, each of us has our own case management system, it's having that middleware, so we can all communicate. That's essential to an efficient county. I know John Walton and his team and ISD are working very hard on it, and I do want to throw out a kudo. With the start of my case management system, we had some issues, and John and his team, when I went over to complain and whine and all the other stuff about this, can't we make this go faster? I'm tired of watching the little ball go around so much. They really have worked on it great. He's been very responsive. I'm great, very grateful to John and his team, and we'll make that work. Doing it among all the partners is going to be a great challenge for us. Going fileless into court, that is still a goal. My lawyers, even the young ones, they still want to hug their paper. I know I'm going to sneak in at midnight and find people at the copy machine printing out paper that they can keep in clutch, but we are going to get there. We have started that move already, and we are going to be the, what I believe will be the first DA's office. I found there are three DA's offices, it said they've gone paperless, but because their lawyers complained so much, they let them take files into court and that. We're not going to do that step. We're going to go the other way. And finally, following up on what the sheriff had to say about our cybercrime, I have one person presently in my office and another person I just hired, a sergeant from the Sheriff's Office. I stole him from there, their top person, I would say, on the tech. And what we're working with the sheriff, we're going to work with Redwood City Police Department, already had discussions, to try and do something, because high-tech is in the county and it's coming more into the county. We see it every day, if you take a walk at lunch and you see who's out there taking lunch. It's a, high-tech is here, and there is crime at a lot of levels. Now, I'm not talking what Chris Flatmo talked about, because that one, when you're getting into that, you know, invasive type of a thing, that really belongs at a higher level. I'm talking about the crime here. I'm talking about Santa Clara County. I was talking to their DA, who has, of course, a high-crime unit, where they just busted a group of people who were doing one of those scams where I'm calling from the IRS to the elders, that type of a thing. I want that. I want those people that are going into service stations and doing, I forget the phrase for it, but where they, you put your credit card in, they've got a reader on it. They take the number off it, and they're off to the races. Well, these two men that I've got working in my office are the best the county has at being able to break down both phones, computers, and technology, and I'm hopeful I'll be able to report back to you as to the effect that has. That will be one of our challenges, but it's a challenge that John Warren and his team are ready to take on and lead the county in, is what our goal is on that. We have on our case management, we do have some more steps to go, because our next step, we've got it live. Our next step is that we want to go to electronic filing of police reports. We're working with our police agencies that they're, they don't have the old liaison officer who walks in a stack of paper that we have to scan, as it's being done right now. Instead, we're going, we want electronic filing with all our agencies through a system. We're working with them on that. We are working on e-supina, which is meaning that we don't send out paper subpoenas to law enforcement or anybody who has an email address. We do it there, and they respond to us that they received it, and we, again, cutting down on the paper, and it's much quicker, and we can verify it. And same thing with discovery to the defense. A constant delay in the system has been getting the discovery there. We're hopeful that this new system, we're going to be doing, we're actually are going to. I've talked with Mr. Gigi Asinto, his, our two old warhorses here, but we know our troops are going to be taking that discovery, and everything will go back and forth electronically. That's the wave of the future, and we're going to see that during our careers, John, on that line. Our elder abuse unit, I'm going to talk a little bit more about that in Measure A, but that's an important step for us that we're marching on. That is one that I've said, this is the most important step we're taking in the next two years, is launching the elder abuse unit with two prosecutors and investigator and with all our local agencies, because quite candidly, there is not in San Mateo County in law enforcement, good elder abuse investigators. That's, there are people who are good at certain parts, but somebody who has it A to Z and stays in the assignment, we're going to give that. And finally, we want to increase, that's, this is every year you will see this on what I want to do, and that's increase our victim services. There's always more room for us to do more services. We continue to look for grants. We continue to appreciate the assistance that you've provided to us and additional people. We're collecting much more restitution now than we ever have because of the help that you have given, and that will always be a priority for me, for everything we can do for victims, because that is always, in the District Attorney's Office, one of our number-one goals. The Measure A, this is, this is where I thank you so very much. This is something, I know the grand jury commented about it in their report, and I very much agree. We have collaborated with Adult and Aging Services and the County Council's Office. We've got a team put together that, when this goes into effect in this coming fiscal year, I, again, will have two prosecutors full-time, nothing else but working on elder abuse, one DA investigator, nothing else but that, and that is to attack it. Now, you know, the law enforcement agencies, when it comes to physical abuse, they see it, it's reported to them, they know how to, that they can do, and they can get it and connect with us. It's really the hidden one. And I know Supervisor Articier, this has been a passion for you in dealing with this, and that is, how do we get to that? How do we get to the elders that are, before they're abused, before we get the children coming to us to say the bank accounts have been cleaned out? That the person, we prosecuted a case since, in the last year, of a fellow in Menlo Park, who was just a woman, elderly woman, competent, but beginning to move a little bit toward not the same level of competency, and a guy, she met a guy in downtown Menlo Park, and he befriended her, young guy, thirties, moved in with her, changed all her accounts into his name, stole her. We took that to a jury trial. He contested and said she agreed with the whole thing. That went to a very hard-fought jury trial. He was convicted, and I think it was Judge Forkum sentenced him to something like twenty-two some years, something like that. That's what we're looking for on a wider basis. It's getting at it, and a big part is training, getting, more training of the financial institutions, the, all of those. That is a focus. That is the number-one project in criminal justice for us in this coming two years. So, because I want you to feel, at the end, that the money that you have so graciously provided to my office has been well-spent, and I have told my team, and I expect to be able to show that. So, there will be, for the people in that, they know there's a great reward, but a great pressure to make it happen. And our overall budget, it is fairly unremarkable in that line. It is continuing to go up, primarily going up due to the usual salary increases you've heard from all the departments, nothing particularly unusual in that arena. Our position's the same.[1738.71] I appreciate what we've had there, where I will say to you without hesitation that the county manager's office and this board has provided my office with the resources it needs to do the job in San Mateo County the right way. I've got nothing. I appreciate what I'm getting in this coming year for specific topics. Mr. Malpe, you've worked with me on the agile workforce and getting some positions that'll be temporary to bridge us while we get our system up. This is more than accomplishing what we need in terms of our sources of income. It remains the same. I'm sorry that unlike Mr. Byers, who's very good in his office at finding money, I'm the lawyer's office that just spends your money by and large. So although we do continue to take in large settlements on cases in our civil enforcement unit there, so I'm pleased in that. The, if I can finish, what I would like to finish with again is a thank you to all of you for what you've provided us because I do believe, and understanding the role that I'm in, is one of them is to be out in that community talking to our citizens. And I like to brag about what happens in criminal justice and what happens in San Mateo County and what goes on. In my involvement with the California District Attorneys Association, I have had the opportunity to truly look at the other fifty-seven counties and what goes on in their counties. And I think that we are blessed in what we, you have given us and what my men and women do. I heard the sheriff talk about, as this is an aside, I heard the sheriff talk about his efforts to hire women into the law enforcement world. Mine's the other. I had interviews last week where I said, you know, we've got to start hiring a man now and then. It is, of my prosecutors, sixty-three percent are women. It is a very sought-after field, and it's a great, it's a great team. And I'm very grateful to everybody on my team. The two here represent that team, but they are men and women, and I will, I won't be braggadocio and say they work harder than anybody, but I will tell you they are without peer in what they do and serving all of you. It is, they are, obviously, they're all very highly-paid lawyers, and I think their hourly makes it something you would be very satisfied with. So thank you. I am appreciative, and if there are any questions, I'm ready to answer.
Madam President, if I could just ask a question of Steve. As all of you know, Steve is usually the first one in this building and the last one to leave at night and on weekends. So it's a little bit of a surprise to hear he let one of his chief attorneys go on vacation. So I want to give you a chance to redeem yourself, Steve. You are asking her to work during, on emails and texts during her vacation, aren't you?
That's really not a question, of course. Once, she, she reads her email once at the start of the day and once at the end of the day. Although I have to confess, I told her, don't do that. Go avoid, once at the start, once at the finish. She reads her email and responds. She isn't as read and delete. I get email from her and I always have to say, is this good night or good morning? And that line. But yes, we, in management, of course, you have to be in touch. When John Warren goes to the Philippines for his golfing outing and visiting family every year, he's on the email, but the work never stops.
You've ruined his golf game. I just want you to know that. I do have a quick question for you. When you were talking about the cybercrime, and then you talked about the, for instance, the IRS one, are you seeing a lot of that cybercrime aimed at the seniors? Or is it just across the board?
Well, it's across the board, but there's a lot of seniors too. Seniors are very, very easy targets, as we've talked about. It is, the seniors will see that, that what maybe other people might simply say, no, that's silly. That's not a chance that's the case. They're, they're subject to that, that very much, the deals that are promised, the sales things. You know, twenty-five years ago, the big thing we always got was, let me put a, you know, ten thousand dollar roof on your house, and they put five hundred dollars worth on it. That was sort of, we don't see as much. Now we're seeing other type of deals that they can go. What we want them to do is feel that they can reach us rather than calling, you know, one of the television investigative groups about their things.
One other quick thing, when you talk about going fileless into court, what happens if you're in court and your computer goes down?
You pray that's a happy judge. No, that, that actually is the biggest concern that we have. But I've been talking with Mr. Walton and his team and the court and their team, and they say that shouldn't be a problem, you know. And of course, it's like the old saying, if your computer goes down, get your pencil out and start writing, you know. It, it, there's always the backup. And that, you know, actually, that's not the big concern. The concern is getting the speed up, making sure we have good Wi-Fi in the courtroom. We don't have it right now. And we're working toward getting good Wi-Fi, working with the court and ISD, and the other is making sure we get the speed up. But in terms of totally shutting down, no, that's not been anybody's concern that's been addressed to me.
I was sort of curious too, the, the volume of paper that you have. I would almost think it would be almost impossible to read the volumes on a computer.
You know, that was a big part for me because I thought all those years I would wheel a cart into the court with twenty-five binders on it, and you always thought, well, the jury thinks he must have something. Look at all those binders. We don't get that anymore. But the answer is, the reality is out of all those, when I've done cases with ten thousand pages, the reality is what you need for court that day, because you know what you're presenting, what you're doing, you really probably need about a couple hundred pages for what you need on that day. And you quickly, you're so familiar with it, you can quickly adjust into it. It is, I know that in the last death penalty case I did with one of John's people, they were on the computer the whole way. I was watching them do it, and they were able to do it. So it's just an adjustment that my, some of my deputies who are more high-tech oriented, they're excited, they love it. They're excited about it.
So this is just going into court? That doesn't mean everything you're doing in the office is...
No, we hope to have everything. We hope, we hope there'll be minimal, it'll never be all the way. We hope it's all, like, we're putting all of our, we've been scanning in all of our old files over the last number of years, scan those in, and hopefully we will, if you come upstairs to visit, you'll see some scattering papers, but hopefully not much is the goal.
I'd have to have a screen about this big just to see it.
Could you come downstairs and help me?
It is so hard.
I'll find my office too.
Yeah, and so many of our offices. It's going to be a great adjustment, but again, it can happen, which means all you have to do is say it will happen, and it will.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for the great job you and everyone in your office does.
I guess, well, one thing, even though, I find it hard to imagine going into court or anyplace else without paper, but on the other hand, you know, just, I'm not as high-tech-oriented, I guess, as some of your younger people, so, but in any case, congratulations on that. On your high-tech task force, are you working with all the smaller police agencies? Because they certainly, I'm sure they don't really have the, you know, the ability to develop that kind of expertise.
Yes, Supervisor, that actually is one of our big goals, is we recognize that of the service we can provide to the small agencies. Because you're right, they don't have any, and we've already are doing that with the resources that we have. We'll go out and help them. For instance, if they seize a phone that could, that we know has evidence on it, they bring it to us. And we will, we are the ones who with a warrant can get into that type of a thing. So yeah, that's one of our big goals is, and the chiefs there, because I've raised this at the chiefs and sheriff meeting a couple of times, they're actually very excited about the idea.
You know, reading through your documentation, you're not online, but on paper, indicates it's the, we have the lowest crime rate, or actually, one of the lowest crime rates in general, but we have the lowest homicide rate in the state of California. What actually is, what's really, do you have some idea about the statewide, what are crime trends in the state? Are we kind of an anomaly, or is this...
Yes, I think, oh, well, for the urban, and that really means the urban counties. But I spent, for example, I spent, three weeks ago, I spent two days out in Tulare County, learning about what they're doing out, their issues out there. They're a county of four hundred and fifty thousand people. They have a bigger office than us and a much higher crime rate than us. Counties out in the valley seem to be inundated with violence, the drug running, the cartels go right up Highway ninety-nine, and they're, they're just sort of inundated in that arena. Marin County tends to be the closest counterpart to us in terms of a low crime rate, but San Francisco, down in Santa Clara and Alameda, I mean, Alameda had on Saturday night, and one of their cities had more homicides than we've had all year in Oakland. And so it is, it, no, we are all very fortunate to live in the county we do and have. It doesn't mean that there isn't serious crime. On the eighth floor right now, there is a jury trial that just started yesterday, no press on it, no publicity, of a woman in San Mateo, sixty-six-year-old woman in San Mateo, who was, went out to the grocery, came home and surprised a burglar who had gone into her home, where she lived by herself, and she was held all night. She was moved around, her ATM card, she was tied up, her, the guy went, a twenty-year-old man with no record who went out. And we, we do not know what motivated that. We will be turning that over to Mr. Keen's team to analyze him if the trial is successful and say, what do we do with this twenty-year-old? So there is, there are violent crimes that are out there. We still have urban crime. I still have a need for a sexual assault unit, a domestic violence unit, a homicide unit, a gang unit. They have caseloads that are full. It's out there, but just not at the same degree. In other words, we think we're controlling it. Out there, they just know they're holding, doing a holding action.
Well, from your presentation, I could see, we all, I think we all understand why you're such a great trial attorney, and I think you've done a great job as a DA as well. So thanks, Steve.
Dave.
Thanks for the presentation. I had two, you know, first off, I'm very pleased about your focus and the county's focus on the elder, risk of the elders. I mean, my mom is eighty-five, and, you know, I really worry about it, particularly with the online, everything being online, because I think, you know, because if someone, you know, if you trust someone you shouldn't, all of a sudden, they, they don't have to interact with another person. They can just go right into the online and start doing things. So that's going to be an important focus. So I had, I had two questions. So in the beginning, if I heard you correctly, you know, obviously, the felony prosecutions have gone down with Prop forty-seven, which we expected, but I think you also said that the total misdemeanor case is down too? Did you...
They, we're anticipating that they will be just a little...
I would have thought that they would have gone up, but...
Exactly right.
But they've gone down.
Yeah, we don't know, that's what I'm exploring, because that's exactly what I thought, Supervisor, is it would be that we'd have that commensurate move. You get a thousand down over the course of a year, a thousand up on the misdemeanor, because we're still filing those as misdemeanors, but we're not getting the cases brought into us. So I don't know if the, and the chiefs won't know, it has to get down into the lower level. Is it because law enforcement's not emphasizing that, they're not spending the time on it, or are misdemeanors just down? That's one of the things that this new system that you've given to us will be able to do is, okay, what are, and break it down crime by crime, which we could never do before. What are the, I could be able to answer to you, you know, here are the number of petty thefts, here's the number of possessions of drugs, here's all of them, and say, here's what they've been, do a comparison that we've never been able to do before.
So again, make sure I understand, it's like calendar year two fourteen misdemeanor filings will, will be likely higher than calendar year two fifteen misdemeanor filings?
Yeah, when we get our final numbers, in a couple of weeks here, it looks like it, or at most, it might be even. It's certainly not going to be any big increase that we expected to have.
Well, you know, when you're, when you're ready, I would love to get some, you know, report back on your analysis of that, because it is, it is counterintuitive.
It is, it is, and I, I'm looking forward to seeing if we can find that answer, because it is an interesting issue.
And then I was also struck that, by the fact that you said sixty-three percent of your prosecutors are women. Is that, is that very typical? And I, I wouldn't have expected...
You know, I would say around the state, there are other offices that have more women than men. We're probably in the higher group, I would say, but what we have found is women have found that candidly, I think they've found there's no glass ceiling. They're able to progress as far as they want. It, you know, some of my very top prosecutors, I told you last month about the case out of Menlo Park on the second-degree murder case involving the couple that was struck and killed by the drunk driver. That was one of my top women prosecutors, and that's very, very, very standard on that line. And we do have a part-time program so that people like Karen Guddati, who was in the part-time program when she was raising her daughters, after the daughters were raised and off to high school and then on to college, she came back full-time and progressed on up. That, we might have otherwise in years earlier lost her. She would have said, I need to make, I have to make a choice. Now it's where we offer women the chance to work in a fifty-percent status, and it's been a great program to keep them.
Yeah, hopefully that gives you a competitive advantage, because as you know, many of the private firms don't handle that very well.
Right, and that, that really probably is one of the biggest reasons, I think, Supervisor.
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't want to label myself as an elder. God forbid. But I got, I, I think I got one of those scam things, and I'm telling you, it, no, no, no. But it was both email and then a follow-up telephone call. Yeah, and it really made me look hard at that, and I'm fairly intelligent and with it, but it was, you know, at first, Marie and I were both very intimidated by it, but once we sort of got into it, I'm sure it was one of those scam things. So I'm glad to see that you're taking care of us elders.
Well, I'm in that group too, so it all works.
Thank you very much.
You know, you know, I got one also, and it was frightening. The telephone message said, you have twelve hours to call the IRS, and if we don't hear from you, you will, you will be, you will be arrested. And, and it was about nine o'clock at night, so who could I call? But the next morning, I called my CPA, and he said, oh yeah, don't worry about it. But I was, I was nervous all evening.
And that, that may be one of the biggest ones. We thought it would just be one of those passing fads a couple of years ago, but it's still out there. They're still doing, and they must have some success because otherwise they wouldn't do it. And you're right, if you suddenly hit somebody who is not sophisticated, or some, how about an eighty-eight-year-old man or woman who's being told, sometimes it's the one about your son, your son is in custody, or your grandson's in custody, you've got to send, you know, send money right now. Here's how you do it, almost like a PayPal. That we want to get to, because in the past, it's all been, well, you know what, it's overseas, it goes to, out into the Caribbean or over to Nigeria. We don't want to be satisfied with that. We want to work with our federal partners and everything, see if we can do that, because that really is scary to people.
Well, thank you, Mr. District Attorney, for everything your department does.
Thank you, President Graham. Thank all of you very much, Mr. Malpe. Thank you.
Let's do the coroner, and then we'll take a short break. Mr. Folkroyd, welcome.
My budget presentation will get things back on schedule for the hearings.
Oh, he's looking for more money, see? Already, you don't have to say anything.
Good afternoon, President Graham, members of the board, Mr. Malpe, Mr. Byers, and Mr. Sacco. The mission of the coroner's office is to independently investigate and determine cause and manner of all unnatural deaths that occur within San Mateo County. One of our benchmarks is we are still able to complete our death investigations within forty-five days of actually taking the report. In the past years, it's been ninety-seven percent for fourteen, fifteen. We're projecting ninety percent. And on that note, I'm sure you, you may have seen in the county manager's report that my office for twenty-fourteen received a efficiency award by the Office of Vital Statistics for the state of California. And what that represents is all forty-four hundred cases that we reviewed last year. The state standard is ninety days. So we were number one for the large county and for the entire state of having no pending death certificates after ninety days. Just to give you an example, the average pending death certificate per agency is thirty throughout the state. So we definitely beat that, and that goes to the dedication of the men and women in my office to make sure that we take care of things promptly so family members can move forward with their final arrangements. Our cost per investigation is estimated at nineteen hundred. Previous years, it lowers because we had some savings. We'll adjust accordingly during future performance reports. I believe that cost per investigation will go down. Our accomplishments for twenty-fifteen, twenty-thirteen, twenty-fifteen, we were very fortunate for the last four years to be able to send members of my investigative staff to the Office of the Chief Medical Examiner in New York. Post nine eleven, that office received monies to provide training to all the medical legal death investigators throughout the United States. For four years in a row, I've always, I've been able to send one or two people back there, and that is a very competitive process. The applicants have to test and apply for it. So that's another kudo to my staff, being able to compete with all the death investigators in the state or United States to go back and take those courses. And our Jane and John Does, again, we were able to send some individuals, death investigators to the National Missing Persons Program and the California Department of Justice Missing Program, and to learn on different ways to investigate Jane and John Does, and to get them, get those families closure and getting those individuals identified. We were able to identify a John Doe case back from nineteen ninety-one this year, so we continue to work on our cold cases. Our Save a Life program, we brought it back at, starting in August of twenty-fourteen. Prior, we only had one instructor, now we have four people in the office that can teach that program. It's a very great program, and it works directly with the probation department. Our Silver Prom, in every fifteen minutes, we work collaboratively with different law enforcement agencies, and this is a program that we go out to the high schools and show them the consequences of drinking and driving. One of our challenges for our upcoming twenty-fifteen, twenty-seven cycle is our expansion of our Save a Life program. As I said, it's a great program, the recidivism rate is very low, I believe it was under five percent of the two-hundred-and-so kids that have gone through this program. I believe that we need to continue to promote this program, I know Chief Keen has shared his support in it. I believe there's so many diversion programs that the juveniles have, that sometimes this program gets forgotten about, but it's our, our commitment to continue to promote that program, and work very closely with the probation department. Our priorities for twenty-fifteen, twenty-seventeen, the National Institute of Justice has gathered death investigators throughout the United States, and is trying to develop a training program for all death investigators, so every death investigator in the United States has the same program of training for their death investigators. And that program that they recognize is the American Board of Medical Legal Death Investigations. It's a three-tier program, they go through three different parts of certification, and that, right now, is the only program that is recognized if we want to work for accreditation of the office, which we will be doing, and this is the first step of that. So that's a great program, and we have a solid commitment from our staff that they want to go through that. And moving the administrative offices back down to Redwood City is a priority, and hopefully we'll be able to accomplish that this year. It's going to be great for us, and also the families that we serve. One of the complaints that we get is that we're so far removed from the government center, it's very hard to get up there, and as we have an aging community, it makes it difficult for those family members to get up there. And county government work is best when we're all in one hub, and I think that will be a great move for us. Our budget overview for twenty-fifteen, twenty-sixteen, it's a minor increase in our requirements, and that is due to the negotiated salary benefits, some one-time equipment for pathology, and our certification program that I spoke to a few slides back. And then for twenty sixteen, twenty-seventeen, it's still a minor increase in our requirements, and that is due to negotiated salary and benefits as well. So I'd like to, you know, thank Heather Ledesma from the county manager's office, and my chief deputy coroner, Jerry Cohn, for their support, and actually my entire staff for their support this last year. We had a great year, and looking forward to the upcoming things that we have planned for the office. And echoing the sheriff and the DA, I believe the criminal justice here in Simontiel County, all the agencies have all worked very closely together. An example is of that, that I see, is going out on homicide investigations late at night. Not only does my chief deputy go out, I go out as well, and the DA is often there as well, and it's not, we're not there to watch over, our people were there to support them, and I know they greatly appreciate when they see us out there. That's my present, budget presentation.
Thanks, Robert.
Thanks.
Any questions? Okay, thank you for being here this afternoon. We're going to take like a five or six-minute break. Thank you, Chief Keen, thank you for waiting while we took a short break, and please begin.
That's okay, Supervisor, I just hope that you didn't save, and all the questions that you should have had for the coroner, that you're going to pass on to me now, but if that's the case, I'm okay with that. Two things before I start, one, as you can see, I got the blue memo for blue suits, and so I see John D. also stuck in that same way, so we're pretty good to start off there. And I like to kind of start my presentation, my kudos opposed to waiting till the end. You know, one of the difficult things about going a little further down in the rotation is kind of all the things have kind of all been passed out, but at this point, I do certainly have to reiterate, I'm one of the lucky few that does have the experience of working other places, so I can talk from firsthand experience how well we have it here in Simontiel County. The level of collaboration has been nothing short of amazing, and I think it definitely contributes to the work that we're able to get done. So once again, to my criminal justice partners here in the county, I certainly want to extend my appreciation to them, I want to extend my appreciation to the local law enforcement who work very closely with the probation department, and has always been very supportive of us. I also want to send a word of thanks to the courts, who definitely, you know, makes our jobs a lot easier in a lot of respects, and we appreciate the collaboration with them as well. So with that, I bring you greetings, and I look forward to presenting the budget for the probation department. Here today with me, I have members of my executive team, I also have members of my supervisory contingency, and, and we are here on behalf of the women and men of the probation department to present our budget. As you can see, our mission statement and our vision statement is a little different from what you may have seen in the past. In late two thousand and fourteen, we really went about the business of really looking at ourselves from a redesigned perspective. We wanted our mission statement and our vision statement to be very reflective of the changing times, not only in criminal justice, but specifically in community-based corrections. And so we really want to try to focus in on core values and things for our department to really strive to work towards. You also notice that our shield has changed, our emblem has changed. Within that, we really talk about, and we have placed in there what we believe are the core values to get our work done, the things that we believe will ultimately help us be successful in the grand scheme of things. The core values that we will focus in within our department will be leadership, integrity, professionalism, excellence, and teamwork. Professionalism is one of the things that goes without saying, that whatever your discipline or your profession, presenting it or moving forward within a sense of professionalism is going to be really important. It really emphasizes though, the relationship we have with those we serve. It's important that people understand that we have to treat our clients and our victims with a level of respect. And so that is really highly emphasized and encouraged within our department, and we also want that level of respect to be also representative in the work environment that we create within our own house. Before you see our goals, our, our goals for the year twenty-fifteen and twenty-seventeen, we took a little different approach than a lot of departments would have taken. Strategic planning has traditionally been a process where people will sit down and put three- and five-year goals forth, and say, these are the things we want to work on. We took a very different approach. For us, we're looking at our goals from a year-to-year basis, and we want to do that because we think it'd give us, one, opportunity for us to achieve something, to accomplish. Oftentimes with strategic plans, you have five-year goals that you're not quite sure if you actually met them or not, but looking at things from a year-to-year process, we feel will keep us fresh, keep us in tune with changing times within our own profession, and as I said, give us a strong sense that we've done something, that we've accomplished something within that calendar year. Additionally, each of our divisions now have individual division-level goals that they will strive to work with, and those go all the way down to the line level, to where individual probation officers and our support team feel as if they are a part of our organization, know the things that we want to accomplish, and hopefully see themselves in those missions. Couple of our key indicators are our percentage of victim restitution fees collected, and a percentage of offenders successfully completing probation. We're continuing to endeavor to reach our marks in the victim restitution collection fee process. As you see, it seems like we've, we've become very level in the percentage of what we've achieved. One of the things we want to emphasize in this is that we have dedicated a probation officer to the process of helping to collect restitution fees, and that endeavor certainly, I think, engaged us deeper in the process. But unfortunately, the reality is, is that oftentimes when a person owes, you know, tens of thousands of dollars in restitution, and they can only afford to pay twenty or thirty dollars a month, the dent in those levels and amounts sometimes are not as significant as we would like. I know that my team is working on looking at opportunities for other innovative ways to approach the restitution issue. Many other counties have restitution courts, and have a little different focus, many probation departments actually have a lot more of a responsibility as far as the actual physical collection of the fees themselves. So there are other opportunities that we're going to look at in the next calendar year to try to bolster the amount of money that we're able to collect through restitution. But as you can see, it continues to be an ongoing challenge for us. As we transition into the percentage of offenders successfully completing probation, it's one of the things I think that really distinguishes us from many probation departments in the state. Although I'm very biased, I tend to believe that we have the best probation department in the state, one of the things that we focus really hard on is helping people successfully complete probation, both on adult side as well as the juvenile side. We currently have a seventy-two percent rate of folks successfully completing probation. We believe that that strongly contributed to the fact that the men and women of our department work very hard, are invested in each of the people who come through our door. Irregardless of how we get them, you know, unlike the bank, we don't necessarily get to go out and solicit business, so we get what comes through our door, and sometimes the people who come through our door are very difficult to work with. But our staff are beyond committed to this work. So I think it's very reflective in the fact that we have such a, a positive percentage of people completing probation successfully. And what that looks like on the adult side, it's, and it's an adult offender that has no new felony law violations at the time probation was terminated, and for juveniles, is a minor not having any new sustained law violation, any new sustained charges. Juvenile recidivism is a little bit harder to wrap your hands around, because we know oftentimes minors bounce back and forth within the system very frequently. And oftentimes, it's, it's easy to say, well, that's a, that's a failure, they, we haven't done right by that kid, because he continues to come back. But I think in the juvenile world, we do look at things like harm reduction, we'll look at things like school attendance, you know, impact of grades, maybe following directions of their parents, there are a lot of, you know, very small measures that all have to go into whether success has been reached for a young person. And so, just from a very kind of systemic approach, the most basic way you can look at it from a juvenile perspective is to look at no new sustained law violations, but it's important for you to understand that there are definitely a lot of gradations within that process. And it's also important to note that this number that we have here, the seventy-two percent, does not include the cases that have been affected by Proposition Forty-Seven. As of April of twenty-fifteen, we have had, three hundred and fifty-nine of our clients have had their charges reduced to misdemeanors, most of which were no longer on probation. Our accomplishments for the past two years, we feel are extremely important to us. As you see, and one of the things we really kind of emphasized here is a step in the, in towards the future, really looking at what things can we do to improve ourselves, not currently in the things we're doing now, but also to set the path for the fact that growth and change is going to be inevitable in our field. You know, we laughed and talked a little bit about just the reduction in overall crime rates across the state, but you know, those of us who've been in this work for a long time, we recognize that everything's very secular, and that some aspects of this stuff will come back again. So we really want to focus in on our new core values, because we think that will keep us strong as a department as we move forward. We, we were able to, to complete a new branding project for the department, once again emphasizing those core values, a new mission statement, a new vision statement. Like other criminal justice partners before you earlier, we're looking forward to the kickoff of our probation information management system, or otherwise known as PIMS. It's an opportunity for us to be able to provide you with the data that we know is important to you. There was a question earlier about predictive policing, there's a strong evidence that also within the field of probation, there are opportunities for us to be predictive with our work as well. So we're looking forward to PIMS coming on board and having an opportunity to delve a little deeper into what the data tells us. Also, we were able to work towards becoming an evidence-based organization. We completed our first evaluation stage, and we're happy to announce that we have been given preliminary accreditation as an evidence-based organization. So that's something that's extremely important to us, particularly as we focus in on new opportunities for funding, new opportunities for work with our partnerships with our CBOs. We feel like this will put us in a, in a, I think, a position ahead of many other folks that will be looking and seeking opportunities for grants and such. And also, we've increased our collaboration with our internal and external partners around the Unified Reentry Plan, particularly in the specialty courts. We understand that, as we talked about realignment, realignment is really starting to sunset when you look at it from a pure number perspective, and we start to realize that most of the offenders that are in our, in our counties are now our guys, they're now our guys and ladies, and we're going to have to work with them. So a unified approach to reentry is going to be critically important for us to sustain the success that we've been able to achieve. Continuing our accomplishments, we were also able to integrate, implement, excuse me, and integrate the JACE, which is the Juvenile Assessment and Intervention System, and it's an assessment tool for juveniles, are really looking to reach and connect and identify the risk and needs of our young people. We, this, we think this assessment tool allows us to not only identify things at an earlier stage, which will become barriers for success for our young people, but we also believe that it'd help us better integrate our services with those in the community. We really are moving towards an inside-out approach in the juvenile justice system, where our focus over the next year is going to be on how do we look at the services we provide inside of our facilities, and then can, continue those, those services once our young people go back out into the, into the community. So we feel like the JACE will allow us to do that, and as you've heard me talk about before, it is that movement towards true risk-based supervision, understanding that those people with the highest level of risk that have been identified should receive the vast majority of our services, and those low-risk cases that oftentimes, you know, feel good to us, and we like those kind of wins, but those cases, we really should be staying away from. Those kids and those adults are going to do well without us, and sometimes we actually do more damage to them by intervening. So the JACE is an important part of that process. We've also had an opportunity to implement the Prison Rape Elimination Act policy. As many of you know, that was a part, it was a federal mandate that was passed on to all facilities. Because we run a juvenile hall, we also fit inside that requirement. We fully reopened Camp Kemp, we've had some very positive successes at Camp Kemp. Many of our young ladies are not only graduating high school or receiving their GEDs, we have a couple of actually, again, moving on to college, we're very proud of that. We're going to be doing the best we can to support those young people moving forward through the use of education mentors and other community-based mentors who will really work with them to make sure that the success that they find themselves on can be sustained. And also, too, the completion of the Loop Road Security Project at YSC. I'm not sure, many of you may not have been to the YSC recently, but the whole continual back part of Loop Road now has been closed off, there's a one-way path, and it's gated on both ends at this point, which makes the facility a lot more secure. So now I just have to see the people walking the dogs out the front of my window and not necessarily in the back anymore, so. Other accomplishments, one of the things we wanted to highlight is a way to say thank you very much to the board and to the county manager's office for your continued support. The Camp Glenwood capital improvements, there's been a list of things that we've been able to do over the last two years with your ongoing support. The underground storm drain and utility improvements were completed, although it's interesting enough with the water issue, I'm not sure how much that storm drain is going to get much use, but we were able to get it done, and we really appreciate your support in that. We've been able to replace roofs, make some exterior improvements with new restrooms and windows and interior painting. Also, we've become ADA compliant in spaces around the facility. We replaced uneven and sometimes broken exterior concrete walkways that were a little off, that were significant tripping hazards, and we're scheduled to do exterior painting, hopefully we'll be completed by the end of this year. But once again, we really want to say thank you very much for your ongoing support in those areas. I would be remiss if I didn't talk a little bit about some of the things we see as challenges moving into the new fiscal years. But we see challenges as opportunities in probation, so we're certainly not here to whine or bellyache about these things, but just merely to bring them forward. Internal staff resources needed for county CGI portal and department PIMS. We really feel like at the end of the day, we really are stretching our staff very thin in these areas, but much to their credit, they have stepped up, and having been a part of a case management system implementation in the past, I would tell you the place where most of these things fall down is with not proper internal testing and integration with the people who have to use it every day. So to the benefit of our team and our staff, they have worked really hard to be a part of this process from the beginning, but we recognize that at the pace we're going, it will continue to be a challenge as we move forward. Ongoing internal support for PIMS, what we would like to do as an organization is to be able to internally have a support team that's set up to make sure that as PIMS continues to grow, because as you know, go live is not the end, it's only the beginning. You will, I'm sure you will undoubtedly ask things of us that we hadn't thought of before we went go-live, and so we're going to need to help to have the support of John and his team to make sure that internally, we can make changes to PIMS as needed, so we can make sure that our system stays fresh and stays an integral part of the work we do on an ongoing basis. Next here, we talk about, about service delivery to AB-12 non-minor dependents, and I reference it as a state unfounded mandate, excuse me, mandate program, which has training needs for probation officers. The AB-12 population is an interesting one. It was some, there was, it was a population that was really placed in probation's lap with an assumption that probation could do exactly what HSA has done with this population. And wanting to extend services to AB-12 youth beyond their eighteenth birthday, I think is an excellent premise. However, many of the services that have to be However, many of the services that have to be, that have to be delivered, really our probation staff aren't effect- effectively trained to do that. Um, so as we move forward, we're going to need to figure out ways to enhance our staff's training so that we can provide the level of services to this population that I believe the state envisioned. But unfortunately, um, did not provide any additional funding to do so. Um, AB twelve is just as complicated as one oh nine was, as realignment was. It, it just needed to have some level of stand-up, um, you know, processes put in place, but that didn't happen. Um, AB twelve is, is a strong, uh, component for what HSA does, but not really what probation does. So we're kind of, uh, taking our lumps right now as probation officers around the state, um, because we're not providing these services at what many advocates feel is a high level. Um, and we want to do that, but we feel like that the training should come along with that as well. And it shouldn't be something that we should have to pay for here on a county level. Uh, ongoing challenges will also be hiring and retaining qualified staff for institutions. Um, what I've done is made a commitment to hire from within as we promote our deputy probation officers. Um, every time I make a promotion and it's to the deputy probation officer ranks out of our group supervisor ranks, I believe that, you know, Larry Silver wants to kick me under the table because I'm kind of stealing from him every single time. However, I believe that it's because we have some of the best group supervisors in the state, we're able to do so. Um, the reality is now we have to find ways to, uh, to recruit and bring people in. Um, we've been, you know, actively searching and recruiting. Um, I'm very, uh, pleased to report that an internal staff-led effort to, to go out and recruit at the college level, uh, really was brought to our management team. And, and we think it's going to be an additional way for us to really help support, um, going out and really trying to recruit really good staff for us. Uh, but it's been a challenge. It's been a challenge because we're competing not only with the sheriff's office, but other local law enforcement for many of those young people. Um, but we're going to continue to make sure we, we strive for it to bring good qualified people in. I'm committed to not bringing in anyone who is not going to be a good employee. Because once you bring them in and they get past probation, you own them. And it's too difficult to, to work backwards and take a chance. So rather than get a warm body, I continue to have, uh, have Larry breathing down my neck for making sure I bring in the right people. So. And then, um, the additional challenge here is going to be implementing more evidence-based programming throughout the department. Um, you know, I'll talk a little bit more as we move forward about kind of some of the things that are happening at, uh, Camp Glenwood. But one of the things that that process is emphasizing is that there is a need for us to look at programming throughout our department. And that any consideration for enhanced programming in one space has to also then move forwards to a larger space as well. So we know we need to continue that process and really look at, um, all the programming that we provide throughout our oper- throughout an agency. Uh, particularly now since we are, you know, we are striving to maintain that evidence-based accreditation. Our priorities for the next year, for the next budget cycle are going to be, one, a successful implementation of PIMS. Uh, we look forward to coming before you and being able to answer all your data questions or the ones that you asked that we didn't necessarily think of, being able to easily go back to the office and process those things. So successful implementation is going to be important for us. Once again, the expansion of evidence-based practices, because as I said, that's going to be something that's going to be a natural offshoot of any type of internal evaluation that we do. Uh, we really want to make it a priority to continue to collaborate with the county and our county and our community-based partners, um, around making sure that we provide evidence-based supervision for those high-risk and medium-risk probationers and juvenile wards. As I said before, you know, all the evidence says very clearly that that's where you should be focusing your resources. We know our, our resources are very limited. And so if we focus in on those populations, we think we're going to get the biggest bang for our buck. And it ultimately helps to keep our community safe. Uh, whereas I briefly mentioned before, we're going to be working on a Camp Glenwood, uh, programming redesign. The focus around this is really taking a chance to take a really critical look at the program in Camp Glenwood. Uh, we've been fortunate to have a camp program in this county for a very long time. However, as things have changed, our populations have changed, the level of programming that's needed for those populations have to match that as well. Um, what we want to do is we've pulled together, um, I think, a tremendous think tank of, uh, juvenile justice and community-based professionals to take a look at what's really needed for this population. Who really is going to work well within a camp setting now? And really ultimately, what does that program look like? Uh, we had our first meeting a few weeks ago and we are going to be moving forward over the next, hopefully sixty, ninety days to really try to hone in on what a new camp programming space should look like. Um, ultimately, when it's all said and done, we hope to have, uh, all evidence-based programming at our camp. Um, that is also then going to be matched with an opportunity to have a very strong aftercare component, which, uh, which quite frankly is not as strong as we would like at this point. So when a young person leaves our camp, to have the level of support they need in a community to make sure they don't come back again. Um, and we really want to take an opportunity to, um, you know, express our appreciation for the courts and many of our partners and the juvenile justice, um, system that have helped us to really start to work this process through. Also, an additional priority is going to be to replace our deficient security system at the YSC. Um, I'd be remiss if I didn't take a moment to, to thank Mr. Sacco for allowing us the opportunity to look really closely at our security system at the YSC. Um, you know, at the time it was state-of-the-art, um, just in two thousand and six, but here in twenty fifteen, not so much so. Um, it's an opportunity for us to really, quite frankly, uh, look closer at our space to make sure that not only are we keeping, um, our young people safe and secure inside the facility, but also maybe take a, a, a keener eye, uh, to our outside exterior as well, which, um, we think needs some, some well-deserved attention as well with regard to security systems. So we're going to be working closely over the next six months on this project. Once again, thank you very much, Mr. Sacco, for helping us identify the bond money that could potentially help with this project. So, uh, we're looking forward to getting in, uh, into that much more. Um, we're also going to continue with our priorities. We're going to continue to work towards, uh, further developing the Unifier reentry model for all probationers. Because I mentioned before, our probation staff, uh, excuse me, our realignment population, um, is dwindling down to the point to where quite frankly, in a few years, um, that trickle is going to probably dry up completely. Um, but we will have our people here, local in our county. And so making sure that we build a very strong Unifier reentry model, um, is going to be critically important towards long-term success. Um, continue to work with our criminal justice partners, as I've said before, um, to make sure that, uh, all eligible offenders are placed in an appropriate alternative custody. And once again, is working closely within the team to do that. Uh, we want to make sure that alternatives to custody are appropriate to the risk level of the people we're talking about. Um, lastly, track and measure outcomes to ensure, uh, the reduction in recidivism that we've, uh, that we've certainly gained to this point can be sustained. Um, it ultimately, my goal is to continue to improve that number. Uh, we believe that with a, a strong Unifier reentry point, uh, it should be attainable for us in the next two to three years to, to creep that number into the eighties. So we're really much looking forward to that. And although it's not here, but lastly, I wanted to just say, a continued priority for us in the next two years would be to further align ourselves with the goals, um, that the county have to, uh, address homelessness and working closely with the foster, uh, foster, foster child population in our county. Um, regarding homelessness, we see ourselves as an opportunity to help identify. Uh, we don't see ourselves as the service delivery, uh, mode for that. But we certainly know that many of our probationers that we have to see, um, suffer from homelessness from time to time. Many of them are chronically homeless. And we know that there are tons of variations in how you define homelessness. So I certainly don't propose to be the one that's going to sit in here and give those definitions to you. But I think, speaking as a probation officer myself, and I'm sure many of our staff will say that we've all at one point or another gone to, to, you know, to see a person under a bridge or at a coffee house or someplace else because they don't have a permanent residence. So we recognize there's a space for us in that identification model. As part of Measure A, um, it was mentioned earlier today, the work around the CSEC population. Um, we see ourselves as part of that conversation. Uh, we've been fortunate enough to be included in that mix. And so we look forward to working with the Police Chiefs and Sheriff's Association here in San Mateo County, um, to really help to, to be one of the, the internal agencies that will help to kind of spearhead this conversation. Um, within our department, we have two dedicated CSEC, uh, probation officers at this point. Uh, we recognize that there are more young people out there to be identified. Um, at this point, we've identified a little under ten, uh, individuals who have, uh, stepped forth and asked for our help. We think that there are more out there. We also are aware that with the Super Bowl coming in, um, to, to our region, that that is unfortunately going to bring many more young people into our region, um, that we should have a, a continuum of care, uh, set up to really address. Uh, for probation, we recognize that many of the young people who come through our doors, who will fit into this population, are unfortunate on a, on this very vicious cir- cycle or circuit between here and Fresno. And will go all the way out to Atlantic City and may spend time in, in Nevada before they come back here. So we recognize that we have, uh, young people in this mix that we think we can do something to, to really assist. So, uh, we appreciate the opportunity to be a part of the Measure A, uh, proposal. Uh, our budget number is in front of you. Um, I'm sure that each of you are probably more familiar with this than even I am. Um, you will see that there is a, a slight increase. Um, and that's really due to some additional Prop one seventy-two funding for our PIMS project and a little bit of an offset to our Title four E revenue decrease. You've heard me in the past talk about our Title four E, um, issues and that, you know, I've committed that, uh, for us in this department, we don't feel that the Title four E federal funding, um, that's set aside for certain probation departments. And it's mainly a, an HSA social services-based system. We don't feel like it's something that we can easily do, um, and doesn't necessarily match our system under the current format. We are endeavoring to work with the Feds to try to see if there's something, an alternative way we can do this. Maybe a probation-specific waiver that doesn't negatively impact HSA as it would do in this county if we were to go along with a, a waiver that would bring more money in for us. But it's important to understand that, um, we, uh, we certainly are going to do what we think is, is going to keep us in this position of honesty and integrity, um, as we move forward. So. And I think the rest of it is, is pretty straightforward. There is, uh, one additional increase and that's going to be, once again, to tell, to say thank you to each of you for your commitment to allow me to hire an Assistant Chief Probation Officer. Um, so that one additional position is going to be for that. And then you will see that position come forth in this calendar year. However, um, that position will be offset, um, by a reduction in other areas. And as you go into the fifteen seventeen budget, uh, you will see then that there's an elimination of that, uh, that additional money as that, uh, our PIMS payment would have been made. And it looks like we'll come back down into, um, a more traditional range of about eighty-six million dollars. And also, of course, there's the, the negotiated, uh, contracts and benefit increases that you are familiar with at this point. Yeah, let's see. I think that's it for our presentation, but I would like to lastly say, um, there's been a lot of conversations today around, um, identity theft issues and cybercrime. Um, just want to, I would be remiss if I didn't mention that unfortunately, our juveniles are, um, very much caught up in that part of it as well. Uh, many of our young people have their identities stolen from them. Um, some of our young people who find themselves, um, away from their homes in placement, uh, or in other types of group home settings, come back to find out that they have purchased homes and cars and, um, all type of other, um, ridiculous things that obviously, you know, they didn't know anything about. And it's a shame for a young person who's gotten themselves together, gotten a life on track, you know, ready to apply for college, only to find out that they can't apply for student loans because they have bad credit at seventeen, eighteen years old. Um, so there's been a lot of work, um, done with our relationship with HSA around this issue of helping our young people clear up their, uh, their credit issues, uh, pulling credit reports and things of that nature. So as we start to think about obviously some of the things that happen within our, in our county around people who victimize, um, our citizens, I want us to make sure we keep in mind the young people that unfortunately oftentimes are, have been caught in the web of those crimes as well. And so that concludes my presentation. I'll take any questions that you have.
I have one que- well, give me a couple of questions. I really don't know what AB twelve is.
Yes.
Who, who are they? I was just going to interrupt.
So the AB twelve population, um, you know, and I, I wanted, I, I only had a limited amount of time, so I didn't necessarily want to go into that. I was hoping you wouldn't ask me, but no, uh, no, but AB twelve population, um, what year was that, that it, that it passed, do you recall? I want to say twenty thirteen, twenty twelve. Um, it is an, it was an attempt on the state's, uh, behalf to allow for young people who've been in foster care or been in placement facilities to have, um, assistance beyond their eighteenth birthday. Because traditionally at eighteen, a lot of those, um, those services would cease. So beyond that point, um, AB twelve steps in and allows them additional help. So whether it's around housing, educational needs, um, additional support. And it's kind of one of those things where it was really quite frankly, a social service-based program because once the young people enter an AB twelve, they're no longer officially on what we call traditional probation. So they have no search warrants, they have no conditions, they don't have any of those things. So the things that we traditionally would-
They're not criminals, etc.
No, they're not. They're not. But in essence, they, this, this wonderful thing, you know, because I don't want to say if I'm, I'm knocking it, but this wonderful thing in essence turns, um, our probation officers into social service, uh, social workers. And without any of the tools that social workers have had for many years to kind of effectively serve that population. And so, you know, we've kind of had to muddle our way through it over the years.
It does pay their rent, as I, I-
It does.
Yeah, but other than that.
Well, it provides a lot, provides actually a lot of services. I mean, it gives them opportunities, um, to get, uh, ongoing, uh, help with their educational needs. It definitely can pay their rent. It's a monthly stipend is about the best way to put it that many of our young people get. And it's, and it's, uh, I think for the appropriate young people, it's a great opportunity to help support them and bolster them as they move on. It's just difficult for probation departments to step into that role when it's not traditionally ours. And so for me to effectively do it well, which is really important to me, I feel like I would need to send my, my deputy probation officers to levels of training that quite frankly, put them on par with social workers in terms of those, those level of dynamics that will help those young people be successful. Because most times we're used to operating from a carrot and stick approach. You know, do we have to help you do the things we need you to do? Because there's this kind of lingering thing of the court's expectations hanging over you.
I sort of did that with my kids, you know.
Yeah, well, yeah, definitely. I do the same with mine too, so.
And, and actually, I was going to say, I really appreciate the reports that you give, um, especially with Camp Kemp. Um, the things that you do with the, the young ladies and their families are, I, as a father of a daughter, I really appreciate, um, what you have done. The other thing on Prop forty-seven, one of the things in your report, you indicate that one of, there's a, there's always unintended consequences. And in forty-seven, there's an indication that it's a little bit more difficult to motivate offenders.
Yes.
Have you found other ways of motivating offenders other than threatening with state prison?
Well, I think, I think what we find is that we're working very collaboratively, not only in DA's office, but with the defense bar, John D's team has worked really closely with us to, and those people who really needed help. I think that they are, it's, they're allowing us to kind of support them and help them in that. Um, I think the numbers are starting to increase slowly into like our collaborative courts and things of that nature. But it's nowhere near what it would have been before. But I think that we're all trying to figure out this new reality and what it looks like for us. So I think that, um, you'll find, I think Rich will say that we are finding alternative populations to go into our, um, into our specialty courts. So while we had a, a lull for a while, it's starting to increase now because we've been able to work collaboratively as a team to look at how do we bring additional people into it to make sure that these, these programs don't flounder. Um, we think that they really are some of the core, um, uh, elements of what our county does really well.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you, sir.
I just have one quick question. You were saying how difficult it is in recruiting and all, or you're doing your best to go for the best and the brightest, obviously. But how many vacancies do you have? Do you know how many?
Well, I think in our, in our juvenile hall, I would say we probably have about thirty. Um, but it's an ongoing target because quite frankly, as people start to retire, and then as I said before, I'm, I'm pilfering my, my, uh, group supervisor, um, pool to bring in, to have them promote to deputy probation officer, which quite frankly, I think is going to make us a much healthier organization over the long run. It's just how do we backfill, um, those spaces? So I, we feel like we've done a good job of trying to get out, but we feel like there's things we can do more. Um, I heard you guys mentioned before, you, you drive up and down the interstate, there's, hey, come be this or come work for CHP or come work wherever. And so we recognize there are probably some, some other media-related things that we can do, um, to kind of get the word out that we think is a, a great job to have. Um, particularly for a young person going to college and, uh, many of us, that's how we started, you know, had these, these jobs and went to school at the same time. And, you know, it was an opportunity for us to, you know, ask for a little bit less from our parents at a young age. So, um, I think it's a great law enforcement entry-level job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dave?
Thank you for your presentation. Um, I think the first word you said when you arrived here was evidence-based processes. So I was really excited to see you, uh, working towards this certification.
Thank you, sir.
It sounds like the progress has been, been, been good there.
You know, our staff, um, and the team really have, I think, embraced the concept and there are still going to be struggles. I think it's, the thing with evidence-based practices is about, it's ongoing growth. And so we really want to see ourselves as a learning organization, which means that we're going to continue to look for ways to do things better. And I think that's what evidence-based, uh, practices and conversations allow us to do.
And I had a question for you about the, um, kind of the trend lines with, um, um, the, the, the number of juveniles in, in juvenile hall. I mean, at one point, those numbers had gone down quite a bit. I'm really not up to date on-
They continue. That, I, we just, before I stepped up to the mic, we were just talking about some of the recent trends. Uh, numbers are down. Um, we, you know, traditionally, once I said early- Um, we, you know, traditionally, once I said early about things being secular, um, usually right after schools, uh, let out, the numbers tend to level off a little bit. The numbers will creep back up again, uh, once schools come back in session. But what we've seen the last two years is that some of these tried and true historical trends have not continued to be the place, this, this, the, the place as we kind of look at it. What we think happened is, is as, as we talk about a reduction in resources, many of the schools don't have SROs like they're used to on an ongoing basis. And so we knew that once school would kind of go in session, many of the kids that we may have been looking for most of the summer, you could find them at school. Um, but these last two years, unfortunately, um, at least from a, from a basic perspective of locating the kids who need to be found, that hasn't been the case. But I always caution people, when you look at the, the reduction in the numbers, it's not necessarily a bad thing. I think what it is, it's reflective of the fact that in the past, we may have had children in our halls that didn't need to be there. And I think what we see now is particularly as we start to focusing on evidence-based practices, I think we see kids are in our facilities who need to be there. Our numbers are low, yes, but at the same time, these kids represent, I think, some of the highest need, um, young people we probably have seen in this county, um, in probably forever. Because the, the layers of issues that they bring forth on an ongoing basis, um, are, are tremendous. So while they may commit a low level offense or they, um, maybe, um, you know, stepped a little bit outside of the nuisance behavior, um, that we've kind of grown accustomed to, as you start to open up their, their issues more and look deeper into their family dynamics, you'll find that these young people have a tremendous amount of issues that unfortunately will keep them on our radar for a time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Uh, Chief, I didn't catch that number at the very beginning and I apologize. Did you say three hundred and fifty-nine, um, felony to misdemeanors in some period of time during this year?
Yes, sir. Uh, since, since, uh, our stats as of April of twenty fifteen, since Prop forty-seven passed, three hundred and fifty-nine.
Okay, thank you. And then I'm wondering out loud if there's any talk in your association about changing legislation that would, um, switch the AB-12, um, from probation to, um, HSA? Is there an effort being made on that? It seems like there should be.
Well, I don't want, I don't want to, I have a great relationship, um, with they just say, so let me, let me say that upfront, so. Um, but you know, quite frankly, there have been larger state level conversations around this issue. And I, and I have to be honest with you and tell you from a pure numbers perspective, we don't have the issues that many of my, uh, my brother and sister, uh, chief probation officers have. Uh, but I do think that, um, just from a perspective of if we continue to provide services to the population, I want to do it in just the, the absolute best way possible. Um, and I feel like that if it's going to stay with probation, then I think there has to be a commitment, um, quite frankly, on the state level, um, to provide more support to it.
Thank you. Um, I'm curious if you could speak at a high level, and I know it's only been in existence for a short time, but the, the recalibrated David Lewis Center in East Palo Alto, as well as the SWAG program in East Palo Alto.
So SWAG is, um, is, as you know, it's ongoing. Uh, we just had the opportunity for, um, for a committee of, of individuals working with SWAG to select their probation officer is going to work with them. Uh, we, we have probably, we feel selected one of the best probation officers we have, uh, inside of our organization to work with them. Um, we're looking forward to that, you know, getting started. Um, so I don't have any real granular level information about SWAG at this point. Um, but as far as the David, David E. Lewis, um, program, really we've got none, but really extremely positive feedback. Um, our probation officers and staff are familiar with it, have an opportunity to interact with them. Uh, many of the probationers that we work with, um, the ones that have either been, had cases reduced through Prop forty-seven or even people who have ongoing issues, they love the facility. Um, I've had an opportunity to speak very candidly with the mayor about, um, her vision of what's happening and she's been very pleased, uh, with the county's support in relation to, um, the foundation and the program itself. So we really see that as hopefully going to be a model opportunity for us to see similar work happen in, in other jurisdictions. So we're very pleased to be a part of it, um, and we feel like that our relationship is going to grow as we further identify opportunities for collaboration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief, I want to thank you very much for the time and attention your team has paid to Camp Kemp. Um, and, and reprogramming it and getting it back on its feet. Um, I just think it's a terrific program for the young ladies and pays more dividends than, uh, having them un, un, under lock and key. So thank you very much for doing that.
Well, we appreciate that Supervisor. I'd be remiss, um, you know, it's really, uh, you know, Rod Moore and his team, um, have worked really hard, um, to make sure that Kemp turns into not only what it had been before, but now really continue to move upward and onward. Um, you know, the successes of some of the young ladies over the past year have been incredible. Um, but as a, as a father of girls as well, um, I'll have to tell you, probably not at least once a month, my heart breaks a little bit, uh, for some of the issues that some of our young people are having, uh, some of our young ladies are having, um, and babies, you know, babies. Um, so it's, it's, while there's certainly a lot of, a lot to be celebrated in what Kemp has done, um, but I think that there's, you know, huge opportunities for growth for us. So we appreciate the encouragement. That's only going to push us a little harder to do better, um, but we really need that as well. So we appreciate your ongoing support. And I, and as was mentioned earlier, those monthly reports, uh, we feel give us an opportunity to brag about the things we're doing. And, uh, and Rod and his team, um, at Kemp with all the staff there, um, have done a great job, I think, of, of really hopefully introducing, um, something to these young ladies that will stick with them for a long time.
Madam President, uh, i- if I just might underscore points that, um, both, both Mr. Keen and Supervisor Pine made regarding, um, evidence-based practicing, practices. It's really critical, I think, as the department moves forward to ensure that the board funds those programs that in fact meet the standards of evidence-based, evidence-based practices. And oftentimes the department can make those recommendations, they're not always followed. Uh, sometimes it's the flavor of the month, sometimes it's anecdotal what works and what doesn't work. But the board, you know, if the board holds the line and said, no, our policy is evidence-based practices, uh, and that's what gets funded in this county, uh, then you could really support that work and I think that's critical for the board to do.
We agree. Any other questions for Chief Keen? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
The Private Defender. Mr. De, De, De Gensento?
Mr. D.
I told John that I was gonna do some introductory remarks, but you can, you can go for it.
Okay, I'll, I'll be prepared to do that. I, I ran into, uh, uh, good afternoon, uh, President Groom and other members of the Board of Supervisors, Mr. Malp, Mr. Sacco and Mr. Callagie, I see is sitting out here. Um, and I ran into Supervisor Tissier and, uh, President Groom out at lunch the other day when I was out on the street. And I said, well, I guess I'll, I'll see you another afternoon, uh, I have remarks to make to you. And I said, I promise that I will be the new paradigm of brevity. Uh, and I will keep that promise. I think the only way a criminal defense attorney can make anybody happy is to recognize how many hours you have been sitting here and hopefully condense my remarks, uh, to brevity. Um, I just want to comment on a couple of things. It would be wonderful if I could fill in the gaps that Mr. Waxstaff talked about with respect to what is happening with Proposition forty-seven. Uh, I'd love to be able to do that, but the truth is I can't. I cannot explain what he cannot explain. Uh, those numbers make no sense to me. Uh, I've been a criminal lawyer for thirty-eight years in this county and I can make no sense out of those. Uh, I can tell you that right now, uh, we are seeing, uh, a lot, we're seeing truckloads of paper from state prison. And I can also tell you that the community is pretty excited, the local community, about the opportunities that Proposition forty-seven offers them. This last weekend at the Free at Last facility in East Palo Alto, we have, we participated in a clinic. We had four lawyers out there, both Spanish speaking and English speaking. Uh, we had four lawyers out there and we had sixty people come and be interviewed and, and to digest what we could do for them with Prop forty-seven. We had them armed with their records, they got their rap sheets, they came and were prepared. It was sponsored by Legal Services, uh, for prisoners with children in San Francisco. Uh, some of you will remember Dorsey Nun, uh, who I've worked with for years. And, and Dorsey's organization did a great job organizing it. And we had four lawyers out there and they had plenty of work all afternoon on Saturday. Uh, and I think that's a really good thing, so I know the community is excited. The way we mostly get involved with it frankly, is by people who write from prison. Uh, and that has basically made it necessary for us to put on a lawyer on it full-time. Laura Torres, uh, that's all she does right now. And she gets letters from prison, uh, but what we have to do with every one of those letters is to sort out who's eligible and who's not, because the prisoners can't be expected, uh, to know their eligibility, they're not in the law business. Uh, and, and so we have to sort out and check the records of the court and determine whether they're technically eligible or not. Uh, and then there's another group, uh, that our lawyers are going out and digging through their old files to see who is entitled to relief, uh, as a result of Proposition forty-seven. And so that's an ongoing thing. I have real faith that Prop, Proposition forty-seven is going to be a very positive thing in the long run. What it is right now, I'm not sure, but I think it will be a very positive economic advantage to this community. I just know, don't know when that's going to start. I, I mean, it's hard for me to take a picture of it, particularly in light of what Steve had to say, Steve Waxstaff, uh, with respect to, it, it's unimaginable. I don't know what this is all about. Uh, I also want to take a moment to thank the board, uh, for the opportunity to again, uh, entered into a contract with the county. Uh, and I want to remark, uh, that, uh, this year, uh, again, I had the pleasure of working with Jim Sacco and for the first time during contract negotiations with Mike Callagie. And I want you to know that Mr. Ball, Malp can be very, very proud that his integrity as a gentleman I've known for a lot of years is reflected by his staff beautifully. Uh, it, it makes all the difference in the world to deal with folks who not only know what they're doing, but who care about integrity and the way this county goes and deeply care about the county. Um, and I'm prepared to answer any questions you'd like me to answer about the contract or anything else.
I, I had, just one for you on the, on the Prop forty-seven. Um, so you, you mentioned, if I heard correctly, that you have, you have a lawyer just working on that full, full-time on the, um, I don't know what's the right words, I guess it's not resentencing, it's the, um, the re, you know, when, when people get out, the felony is taken off their record.
But it actually becomes a resentencing because the court actually has to approve, uh, a resentencing. Actually, some of it is almost automatic. I'm not going to suggest that it's complex legal work. For the most part, it's not. Sometimes you got to go into court where there's, uh, where it's not mandatory for the court to grant relief, but they may. So there's some gray area like everything in law, so.
Yeah, but you, as you said, you have to sort out who's eligible and who, who isn't.
Yes.
And, and so the attorney that works full-time, that must be somebody on the, on the Bar Association staff? Because you wouldn't be able to kind of contract that out the way you normally do.
I may have misspoken, this is an independent contractor, but that's all she's doing. She's not taking any other cases right now. She is taking only those and she basically sets up, uh, four or five days a week and that's all she's doing. There's enough work to do that.
And, and do you think that the, um, the folks in the community are well-informed about the opportunity to have their felonies removed?
Absolutely. Uh, we get calls, we have an officer of the day, uh, every day in the office, a felony qualified lawyer who, uh, guards the phones and takes complaints and takes suggestions and just offers help to the community. And the number of calls that we get into the Private Defender program about, I want to talk to a lawyer about Prop forty-seven, uh, all they need to do is come in, we'll sit down, we'll talk to them, uh, and we'll do everything we can to help them.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now we will go to.
You win the brevity prize.
Pardon me? Oh, good.
Next on the hit list is county support of the courts.
Madam President, members of the board, this particular budget unit is non-discretionary. Uh, it is simply the implementation of the state law of trial court funding, which froze into place when it was passed, the net funding levels of the county for the courts. Uh, our county, um, uh, this year, our maintenance of effort is approximately seventeen million, uh, dollars. Uh, and as I point out every year, of the fifty-eight counties, uh, only twenty, including ours, are lucky enough to pay a maintenance of effort. The other thirty-eight counties, uh, that are directly administered by the state pay no, um, funds toward, uh, the operation of the courts. And as I said, it was simply a matter that this county always, uh, funded the court, um, considerably above what the minimum requirements were. And when the law was passed, uh, that was frozen into place. And so, uh, that's the result of that. But sometimes the board attends meetings where other counties complain about various formulas, usually ones that they view aren't beneficial to them. And you might point out that in this particular case, um, they may not be paying anything and we are. So, um, uh, other than that, it's a budget that the board has to adopt.
Okay.
John, I have a quick question. I'm looking at the page, how much did you say we expend?
Our maintenance of effort is seventeen point two million.
Okay. Budget says twenty-one.
That's the, our total requirements. Um, the maintenance of effort is, is a complicated, um, formula that some fines and forfeitures we get have to be sent to the state.
Judicial benefits too.
Judicial benefits were previously paid. So it all gets, um, mushed into the main, final maintenance of efforts numbers. That's why they don't look like they add up, uh, quite.
Okay, fair enough, fair enough or unfair enough?
So that's it for the Criminal Justice. We'll switch now to, uh, Administration and Fiscal and begin with Information Services. Mr. Walton, welcome.
We, uh, we asked John to keep the Friends of ISD, uh, away from the meeting due to the lateness of hour and he was successful in doing that.
Only when we're handing out new computers and everyone's our friend. iPhones and computers make for friends. President Groom, members of the board, Mr. Sacco, Mr. Malp, thank you for, uh, having us here today. I realize it's lightening the day and you've heard a lot of other presentations. I, I can't promise to be exactly brief, but I, I will move through the, the presentation in a, uh, in a, in a rapid manner only because I, I like talking with you more than presenting to you. So if you don't mind, I will, I will move through the presentation. First, I'd like to, like, like the other presenters did, I've been watching the, the presentations and really thank the staff and of the ISD Department and, and the CMO's office and your staff working most to, to create this budget and to, uh, support us in the last two years and then, and the upcoming years, I think we have a lot of interesting things we've already done and a lot of interesting things we're going to be doing. So, uh, we really appreciate the partnership with all the departments and, and you as well. The, uh, the, the mission of ISD really, for us is about connecting, connecting, uh, the citizens, the residents of the county to the government services and internally connecting, uh, the, the users in the departments, the tools that they need, to the information that they need to do their jobs. I, I put this up there because really for us, it's a sea change in, in technology, as you've probably seen in your personal lives. Technology departments used to be about controlling things and everything had to go through the central department and we were all knowing and, uh, you would have to wait your turn and we'd get to you when we could. And though some of that obviously still remains, I, I am controlling in some areas, I won't deny it. Uh, we do try to be more collaborative and we really do try to focus on partnerships with departments and working with them to connect them to the solutions, to the tools, to the things that they need to be successful. So for us, that's the transition and the change that we're going through.
Does that guy work for you? That prior picture?
Uh, no, no. That's a picture of, uh. Just one of our heroes. Uh, that leads us to the technology trends and, and where we think things are going. You know, we talk a lot about the transition to the cloud. The cloud is a, is a marketing term really, it's a kind of amorphous idea. But it's really just indicative of how we work with things in our consumer lives. You know, people worry a lot less now about, uh, where information's coming from, where it's stored. Again, we used to be more controlling and thoughtful about, you know, it has to be here, it has to be right outside my office or under my desk. And we're really trying to leverage some of that consumer and corporate enterprise type of technology approach to doing things. Uh, one of the, the, one of the people I follow on Twitter actually just tweeted out this morning something about, um, you know, I just called Uber for my Apple Watch from the shower. Um, and it just reinforced to me, even as CIO, I thought, huh, how am I gonna integrate that into our work lives? Where people want to call Uber cars from their Apple phones. And so it's one of the things we're thinking about and that's the, really the internet of things for us is we, we listen to all the presentations from the other departments and everything's connected now. You know, it's not about, you have a PC on your desk, and that's the only thing that's connected. Every device you carry, and we all have four or five devices, and plus another six devices in our offices, it's all connected. We want access to it all the time. And not only do we want it in our offices, which leads us to the next one, we want it to be mobile. We don't want to have to be in a certain place to do our jobs. We really want to be connected to it whenever we feel like, whether it's in the shower, in our office, at our home. Hopefully not in our cars when we're driving, but our cars are even connected. So it's a really interesting challenge to solve technically, and we can only do that in partnership with the departments and with the citizens and with the partner companies that work with us. And that makes us a lot more social. You know, I look back two years ago when we first started talking about where we wanted to take this county, and you know, back then, we were just easing into the, is social media good? Do we want to be connected to these things? And then I was at a conference with Mr. Malphey the other day, and he took a selfie of us and tweeted it out, and I was telling him, you know, I've worked for a lot of, I've looked for a lot of mayors and people who called themselves technical people, but that's the first time my boss ever tweeted out a picture of me at a conference. So it's interesting that people talk the talk, but here in the county, I think everybody in the county is really trying to embrace technology and really integrate in a sort of multi-channel approach to how we deliver services. But that all generates data, and that's one of the real challenges for us. We heard a lot about the hackathon, I think the more data we generate, that's a good thing. I think evidence-based indicates to a level that it's based on data, and we need to collect that data and analyze that data and put that data to good use. So in my department, one of our thoughts for the future is how do we fit into that paradigm? What can we do to make the data, bring the data out of its silos and keep it secure and keep it confidential, but make it useful at the same time? So that's one of the things we're going to be thinking about in the future. Which leads us to the final thing, which is about security. And I was watching the presentations and hearing about concerns about security, and it is a concern. You know, we have to be thoughtful about that. As we become more connected and more social and collect more data, we always have to keep in mind, how do we protect that data? And there's appropriate uses of data. And though you wouldn't think it, governments are a huge target for hackers and things like that. We collect health data, we collect criminal data, and all of that data is stored. And though we may not see ourselves as targets, like some of these corporations and things like that, we are targets. And we get hundreds if not thousands of attacks a day that we do block as best we can. But I will say that, I was at a conference the other day, and someone asked about the future of security. You know, we can only do so much, and we talk a lot about insecurity, it's not if you get hacked, it's when you get hacked, how you're going to react to it, and how you're going to respond to those incidents. Because it's almost virtually impossible with the way technology's evolving to block every avenue of things. And so we really see user education. Again, ISD cannot in and of itself prevent all the security risks to the county. So we really see educating the users and making all of you and the staff in the departments sort of our allies, and how do we protect data and educate people to do that well? Just like the phone calls you were getting about the tax scams, we get those as well. And if you have that education, if we can convey that education to people about how to be aware of those things, I think that goes a lot away than trying to fix the problem after the fact. I mentioned this already, I will just say that the pace of change, I'm just always amazed. We were having a little farewell luncheon today for one of our staff that had been here for forty-eight years, had worked for the county. And she was relaying stories about the old days when she first started working with computers and what it was like. And it was interesting, because I didn't start micro until twenty-five years ago, but even for me, the pace of change is really just shocking how fast. And we joke about it a lot, it's the planned, what we call planned obsolescence now. We used to try to get the old equipment to last five to ten years. Now we're talking about two to three-year lifecycle replacement cycles, and just how fast it's moving. You know, we need to be thoughtful about that. Technology is a great enabler of our services, but it is expensive as well. And so we're really looking for that balance about how do we utilize technology, sort of embrace this sort of consumer view of technology and let people have a lot of devices and be as connected to their tools as possible, but at the same time, be thoughtful about what that costs the organization and support and software and things like that. So we'll continue to work with you and the county managers often, departments, to find solutions to that problem. To go back then to the theme about connectivity, you know, we look at our services in really three primary areas. We have the infrastructure, which is all the boring wires and servers and switches that we we as technologists love to talk about and debate, chipsets and things like that, which I won't bore you with today. Then there's really the data, which is the meaningful piece that all these systems generate, that I think really adds value out into the departments and the community and to answer the questions that you ask. And then the services piece, you know, we are a hybrid organization, and I think we always will be in government. Technology is not one of those things that you can easily centralize or decentralize. So a lot of what we do is about creating that connectivity, working with our partners, and finding ways to use those three components really to meet your vision for the future for the county about healthy and safe, and how do all these different tools that we do, how do they align to that and support the things at probation? Or the health system, or human services, or DPW's trying to do to deliver their services? I put this slide up there, but as I was looking at it, I thought, really, it kind of boils down to three things for me. What we need to do as ISD in the future. The last two years, we've been collecting data, solving our budget problems, getting the budgets aligned, really fixing some holes we had technologically and from an organizational standpoint. For me, if I were to summarize this slide, I'd say it really boils down to three things. As a service department within the county, we really are first and foremost need to, over the next coming years, focus on customer service. You'll see in the slides I'll present next, we're really doing well, I would say, in some of the basic tackling and blocking, if you will, of what traditional IT departments do. But customer service is one of those areas we really need to focus on. How people feel about us is really important. And we can have all the data in the world to show that we think we're doing a good job behind the scenes, but if people don't feel good about it at the end of the day, that's really going to affect our effectiveness. The other one's communication. Because again, we work hard in the technology department, but we are technologists. We don't like to talk a lot. We'd prefer to go in our back room and work on something and get it done. But that's a detriment sometimes, because even though we're working hard to provide good services or to do things, if we would just communicate better with our customer departments or with the public, sometimes I think it would go a long way to to improving that customer service. And so we have a big focus on that. And then the word I'll leave everyone with that we try to stress on a lot of our steppings is just partnership. You know, we are a service department, but really it comes down to the partnership between ISD and the public, the partnership between ISD and the departments to have that sense of joint ownership that I think you hear from some of the departments when they talk about us. We want them to feel like we're there with them, trying to solve their problems, and we take their problems seriously. And they can come to us, even if we can't solve the problem, we'll try to help them find the solution to the problem, even if we aren't the solution. So then, to get to the evidence base, the hard data, our performance indicators for the department, it's a story of good and bad news, as far as I'm concerned. But I will say that the bad news really, in my mind, isn't a bad news, it's really a guidepost to where we need to focus our efforts for ISD in the future. I think one of the important things about data is not to try to manufacture data or change data to make yourself look good. I think the importance of data is really to collect the data and understand the data, and then take actions to improve the data over time. And so that's what we've tried to do in the past few years in ISD, and we've changed a lot of our performance metrics, and it's been eye-opening for us. Where we feel like we're doing well, and then where our customers are telling us we need to do better. And so I just want to walk you through here for a few moments, and I know this is the more boring data piece, but I think it's important. One is around projects. We have completed in the last two years over a hundred and twenty projects in ISD, whether they were internally or for customers, for a net value of close to twenty-five million dollars. And we've done those in partnership with departments and achieved with a rounding of a hundred percent success. What we haven't achieved, which you'll notice below that, is people feeling satisfied about the project. So, you know, the old joke in project management is they can be fast, they can be good, or they can be on budget. So we've really focused on fast and on budget. We're getting them done, we're banging them out. And but the data will tell you, people aren't always happy at the end of the day, when we get done with those projects. And so that's, on the other piece of data, the piece we're going to focus on in the future. We feel like we've implemented an online project management system, we're being good fiscal managers of county money, we're not running over on projects, we're delivering them when we say we're going to deliver them, and getting things done in partnership with our partners, but we want people to feel good about those projects, at the end of those projects. So we're really going to take a much closer look at how we have a satisfaction indicator that really makes people embrace what gets done on time and on budget. The other thing we knew anecdotally that we know in hard data now is that we have to do a lot better job around our service desk. We had a lot of anecdotal stories about, you know, when I call ISD, I don't get help in a timely manner, or I don't, no one ever calls me back. And a lot of that was true, but we didn't have good data to support it. So we've implemented a new service desk system that perhaps some of you have interacted with, called ServiceNow, which is a cloud-based solution, an industry standard to replace our old system. And that's really helped us start to see, it's really started to open our eyes internally in our department. We can all now see through dashboards what tickets are in queue, how long they've been in the queue. Departments can pull their own reports and have conversations with us about why does it take so long? Why aren't our people satisfied? So it goes back to that partnership piece. We are willing to own that we need to fix this. And we've hired some key staff and implemented the solution now, and I think you'll see this number dramatically improve in the next two years, because as I said, customer service is really one of our key focuses going forward this next two years. Now that we have solid data and we have good systems to track it, we're going to have a laser-like focus on improving this number over time. The other one that is on here is the, what we call the Priority One Tickets. A Priority One Ticket for us is related to something that, when it breaks or when it goes down, it affects a large group of people or affects a large system. And we hadn't done the job we should have done in the past about prioritizing those tickets above other tickets. We had more of a serial approach as things came in, you know, if you were first in line, we'd get to you first, and then the next person. So we've really gone through a process in ISD now of identifying in the process what a Priority One Ticket is. We've created an on-call system, updated on-call policy and procedures that we go through now when a customer calls in. Our policy states that any customer can call something a Priority One issue, and that we'll respond to it in under an hour. And if we can fix it, we will, and if we can't, we'll have good communication with them about how long it will take to fix it. And so we're starting to track that data in a lot more detail now. And again, we get weekly reports at the ISD Senior Management Meeting about how well we're doing those, how many we had, how much time staff spent addressing those, and really focused on what we call our service-level agreement, what we tell the departments and our customers we're going to do, we're going to focus on doing in the coming months and years. The next one then, I'm out of sync with the slides, is core services. And this is where I'm happy to say I think we're doing better than than a lot of people expected. The core systems, we don't control everything in the county, but the systems we control, the main phone systems, the main radio systems, the main network, we're actually achieving through some of these new technologies that we've implemented over the last two years, a lot higher uptime. And so the, I know ninety-nine point seven doesn't mean a lot, I'm just numbers to people, but it's an industry standard where a ninety-nine point seven rating means that unplanned time would be in the two, two-and-a-half hours range of unplanned outages. And we're actually closer to about an hour of unplanned outages every month. It's still not, I know, we'd like to have zero downtime, and that's certainly always a goal. But in reality, you know, I think we have to really acknowledge that the technology we're putting in place, and this goes back to the balance conversation we're having, no one likes things to be down, but we're working closely with our partner departments to look at these key systems when we do have outages. And since we're overachieving, you know, we'd like to see this in the ninety-nine point nine percent range. I used to work for a company, you know, we used to design what we called the Five Nines, system uptime, which means almost virtually zero downtime. But this goes back to the balance of cost versus uptime. Everything costs money. If the example I give to my friends that are non-technical is that, you know, it's it's like, how many cars do you need to own? And how many road options do you have to have to get to work? What's it worth to you if you never want to be late to work once? What time would you have to leave, and how many different modes of transportation would you have to employ? And so that's the problem we're trying to solve, and I think one of the board members brought it up in talking with the District Attorney Wagstaff about the new systems we put online. How do we ensure that that connectivity remains? So we're looking for not a single point of failure, we're trying to design systems now with these new project fundings around Majorate, have multiple points of connection, so we can reduce downtime, so that we know when those cloud-based applications are up and running out there, that we will have connectivity to them, and we can route people to them through the network appropriately, so that we minimize downtime as much as possible. The other one, I should have brought my glasses to this one, is the Open Data Portal, and we appreciate, I won't belabor that, I think we talked about that at the last meeting. We're getting a lot more activity around Open Data than I think we had initially targeted, so we're going to continue to raise our target goals of what we think we can achieve there. It's hard to benchmark, because Open Data is still a fairly new concept in government, but, you know, we look at what San Francisco does, and Oakland, and other other cities in the Bay Area, and how they're doing Open Data, and we try to benchmark ourselves against them. We're achieving about twice the amount of activity around the Open Data Portal that we originally thought we would, based on what other governments see. And I think, you know, you did well to acknowledge Bev Thames and John Ridner and the team, and all the hard work they do. It's really due to their hard work and the Open Data Team from the CMO's office and the partner departments that really make that happen. Our costs, we have an industry standard called Cost per PC, what it costs to provide service per PC in the county. We think we're pretty in line with the standards around that. And in this area, customer satisfaction around the Open Data Program and some of the other innovative programs we have is actually very high. And so we're looking at, in those areas where we have low customer satisfaction, what can we do to mimic some of the behaviors or some of the communication strategies that we're employing in the innovation areas where we're getting high customer satisfaction scores, and learn from that and apply it to some of these other areas where the customer satisfaction scores aren't as high? And then the last, the last slide, again, kudos to the staff for their hard work. We actually have, one of the industry standards is how many FTE staff does a county have, like ours, a government, two full-time employees it supports in the county? I think we're very efficient, we're below average in the number of staff we have, so that means we have, each of our staff people supports more county-wide staff than typically you see in a government organization, so I'm proud to say that everyone's working very hard to provide that. We know we, like I said, we know we need to focus on customer satisfaction. One of the things we did that I think gets to that game changer is employee evaluations. And we had set a goal for ourselves of ninety percent employee evaluations this last year, and actually achieved higher than that, which we're happy about. Because for a lot of our staff, they're the reason that we're able to provide good customer satisfaction. So by doing employee evaluations and having that honest dialogue about where we need to improve, I think that's going to go a long ways to getting a better performance. And then our staff appreciate it as well, you know, I got a lot of feedback after we got done with that about staff saying that this was the first time a lot of them had ever had an evaluation. And so it means a lot to them to get feedback. So we're going to keep this program going and do it. The accomplishments, you've heard all these, we do these in partnerships with other departments, and so I was just, just in case someone else had failed to mention some of the projects you're already familiar with, I won't belabor these, you're familiar with the Workday Project. I've already mentioned the Service Desk Project, we talked about Wi-Fi. I just want to, again, congratulate our radio team. I've managed a lot of radio systems in the Bay Area for San Jose and San Francisco. I think we have one of the best radio systems in the Bay Area. I think the P-25 Motorola system we have here, bar none, is probably the best radio system in the Bay Area. And we don't recognize it enough, they're kind of quiet performers, but it works well, and it's probably one of the most advanced systems. And so I think that goes to, goes again to the leadership of the county and getting some of those things done. The CGI Project, you've had updates from all the other members, I will say we will just keep partnering with those departments to deliver that. The Open Data Program, we've already talked about. The website is working well, the new website, we appreciate departments embracing that and owning the content on it and keeping that fresh. We're continuing to work on the network project, I mentioned how we're installing fiber. One of the things that we're starting to work on now is a lot of the partner cities in our county have come to us and asked if they can be connected to the fiber network as well. So we have several meetings coming up where we're talking with the City of Redwood City, South San Francisco, Millbrae, Burlingame, about connecting them to the county fiber as well in partnership, which is exciting for us. We like to think that some of these projects we do, Majorate-related projects, can benefit more than just county facilities, they could benefit other partner cities as well. We have a department-wide training plan that we've integrated now with our CPMS system. Our budget is balanced. If you remember from two years ago, we were trying to overcome a shortfall, so we're budget-neutral now. We have a PMO office established, which is one of the reasons we're doing well in the project management area. And we have a new tool that's available to all the ISD staff, where they can see all the projects online that are available at any time. We hired an assistant CIO. Unfortunately, he had to step out for a meeting. But his goal, when I hired him, is, and I think the staff will tell you this from staff meetings, customer satisfaction and operational excellence are his two key things. So he meets with staff. So he meets with staff every morning for fifteen minutes at nine o'clock in his office to talk about those and look daily for ways to improve those, which I appreciate his addition to the team. Our priorities then. We have a new five-year strategic plan that we'll be sharing with you in August that we worked with departments on. I think it speaks a lot to the partnership through the Information Management Planning Council, which are all members of the Executive Council, Department Heads. We're looking forward to sharing that with you in August. We mentioned customer satisfaction. The, one of the things that we'll talk about more perhaps later is around space. We have some facility things we're doing with Department of Public Works that we think are significant around utilizing space better and making those modern workspaces, enabling it with Wi-Fi. DPW is one of our really key partner departments and we think some of the things we're doing with them is really exciting in some of these new workspaces. Major projects, and I know I'm going too long here, Identity Management SharePoint, Office 365. We converted the Technology Department to the new email system. It's exciting to see that up and running. Our goal is to get all the departments in the county converted to the new email system this calendar year. We'll be doing a presentation to Executive Council of tenanted schedule of when departments could be converted. The biggest challenge for us on that is really the conversion of the old data off the old email system onto the new one. Just going down through the list here, we continue to also work, I should mention, in partnership with Tax and the Controller's Office and the Assessor's Office on planning for a new replacement for the current assessment and taxation system that RFP will be going out this fall. We've already talked about communication being key, so I will not belabor that anymore. Our challenges. Oh, I get to use the laser, but it's not going to show up on the screen. That's a shame. This is a typical tower of where you want to be a Gartner or a consulting firm will tell you this. We're still down in the, in the red and orange area. We're still focusing on operational excellence that I talked about, where we want to move to over the next two years. That's the top of that stack. We really want to work with departments to help them be their partner in transforming their business. And so we really see that as our, our goal and our challenge. The challenge is for us is continuing to balance full-time positions with contractors. We have about a hundred and ten full-time staff and with your support, we're going to add a few more to some of these core service areas. But we also have a large contingent of contractors. We have close to seventy contractors working on projects with us now. So we're going to continue to look for that balance. We use contractors a lot to do these projects, but we try to, from a cost standpoint, maintain a reasonable number of staff as full-time positions so that we don't cost the county too much and the departments too much. We're going to continue to focus on public engagement, infrastructure that you've been very supportive of. And from an administrative standpoint, again, working with DPW, I think, you know, we're going to continue to look for ways to utilize space. We're partners with them on the new emergency public safety communication buildings, going up to relocate the data center there in the future and make that a hub for computing as well as dispatch in the future. Under Measure A in the budget is a continued replacement, if you will, of a lot of the infrastructure. Measure A we view as one-time funds that we can use to replace a lot of the aging infrastructure. We're going to start moving away from a lot of those older tape backup systems and things like that. So you see things on this list like additional fiber, more virtual servers rather than physical servers, more public Wi-Fi, video conferencing, replacing things like that that will make us more resilient. We're really trying to learn from companies like Google and things like that about how they build their infrastructure and build a similar infrastructure that's very small and compact and resilient and high computing, but very distributed at the same time. We're trying not to put all our eggs in one basket from a facility standpoint, if you will. There we go. The budget overview, if you'll bear with me, I'm almost done. We had about twenty-six million dollars in last year's budget. There's a bit of a bump, as you'll see, up to about thirty-three million. A lot of that's one-time project funding. So if you go to the final year, twenty sixteen, then you see a drop back down to twenty-eight million, which we believe is pretty close to a steady state of what our budget should be. And the thing I'll just point out again is that we are at zero net county cost now and that we're covering all of our funds from our programs and departments. And with that, I will conclude and just thank you all again for your support and leadership in the county. And if there's any questions I can answer, if I haven't fatigued you too much with my fast tech talk.
Well, who's first?
I'll go first.
Okay.
The other day, we had the budget presentation by the assessor. And one of the items in there was a GIS upgrade, I think, to the Assessor's Office that included cadastral mapping, et cetera. And I'm wondering if the county is also upgrading its GIS system. Because as I recall, we put that in twelve, it was a long time ago. And as you were saying, there have been many changes. So I'm curious about countywide GIS upgrades.
We hired a new leader for GIS, if you will, in ISD about a year ago now, six months to a year ago. And she's really been very instrumental for us. We've been working with the Assessor's Office and DPW, some of the key stakeholders that really traditionally have held the data, if you will, of GIS within their departments. If you think about GIS, it's really a, again, a hybrid model. Obviously, the assessor owns the parcel layer and the data there. And so I know they need to make improvements to how they manage the parcel data themselves. And Public Works obviously owns the roads and other utility type of data. So what we're working towards and have worked with them on and hired a consultant now to come put together a plan, to your point, for an enterprise or countywide, if you will, GIS system, is how do we tie all these things together? If the Department of Public Works is going to generate their data that they know the best and own, and the assessor's does, we view ourselves as the aggregator of that data so that we become, not unlike the CGI Project or things like that, we allow departments to create and maintain their own data because they're the experts in the data that they own. But we want to bring it together so that it all matches up and then be able to provide it to the public through a single portal so that, you know, if you're an individual, you're not running from departmental website to departmental website trying to track down a single piece of data. So I didn't, unfortunately, I apologize, I didn't get to see the assessor's presentation. So I'm not specifically familiar with what they proposed, but I'm sure it fits into that overall framework.
Thank you. Just one other, maybe a couple of other things. At the Hackathon, I heard, and maybe other people heard, some of the young technologists grumbling about our Open Data. And I can't tell you specifically what that was, but is there any chance of doing a survey of those seventy or eighty participants to see, you know, did they, what improvements would they make in the Hackathon? But also include a couple of questions in there about our Open Data to see what we get back?
Absolutely. Yeah, we'll absolutely do that. I'll ask staff to work with John Ridner and we'll get that survey out and bring you the results.
My last question is, when can I get off group-wise?
As soon as we have approval on, I think July twenty-seventh is the next Executive Council meeting. That's when we'll be presenting the proposed schedule of conversion. I think, I think we'll have you right at the top of the list.
Well, I appreciate.
I mean, your whole group.
Yeah, the whole.
We don't, we don't, we convert departments as departments, not so much individuals.
I just want to thank you in closing for your leadership and all the things that you've done for San Mateo County. It's been a breath of fresh air. The new ISD is awesome. And just really appreciate your leadership and your team's contributions to the county.
I will relay your thanks to the department. They're working very hard on your behalf. Thank you.
Dave.
Just echo what Warren, Warren and I met with you some time ago about public Wi-Fi for areas where people, really low income, people who would not have access to it otherwise. And the proof of concept was in both in my district and in Warren's. And I know you're going to extend that throughout the whole county, I believe. And so I've really appreciated that. And you're kind of a can-do spirit, both you and the department. And every time, any of my staff or any time we've had to work with any of your people in ISD, we've always found the people to be really responsive. And I have to say, I really appreciate your candor. A lot of departments come in and they have these performance measures or whatever or, you know, when they're talking about customer satisfaction, they'll say a hundred percent. And that's, you know, I don't know how they collect them necessarily, but yours, because they are internal, you probably do get pretty accurate responses. And I, again, I have to really appreciate your candor of showing where you haven't met your expectations and then the fact that you're going to be working on it to get there. So congratulations. And again, I appreciate your honesty.
I was just going to add that when, during the interview process, when you joined, Supervisor Pine and I sat with you for several hours. And I cannot believe, John, the things that you said you were going to do, you've done almost all of them in just a very short time. And that, when we finished the interview and I said to Dave, wow, it'll be very interesting to see how all this plays out. And it's really played out quite well.
I appreciate that. And I just want to thank you and, you know, it's, somebody asked me, I was at a conference the other day, what the difference is, and they were trying not to call out my former employer. But the difference here is to be a successful CIO here is your support. That's what makes the difference. CIOs are only as successful as the organizations that support them. So I appreciate that.
Thank you. Good budget.
Thank you for using our Measure A money well.
Thank you.
Last but not least is we're going to hear from Sam Serra with Mr. Hood.
That'll be a tough act to follow. Good afternoon, President Groom, members of the Board, Mr. Malpe, Mr. Sacco. Thank you for the opportunity to address the Board during your budget hearings. As you know, Sam Serra's budget is approved and monitored by the Board of Retirement, but we're well aware that the county's current and future contributions play an important role in the budgeting process. So today, I'm here to provide you an update on the status of the retirement fund. If I was to characterize the retirement fund in one word, I would probably say improving. And I'm cautiously optimistic about the prospect going forward. The, the fund has actually rebounded quite nicely since the market lows of two thousand and nine. So if you went back to last June and the five years prior, you would see that we averaged about thirteen percent returns per year. So that takes us to this year. So, so far through May, we're about four point five percent. And we don't expect to make our assumed earnings rate, which is not necessarily all bad news. And that's because of the way we do our smoothing. We do a five-year rolling period where we smooth in gains and losses. And we've recognized all the losses of the, of the past year. So now we pretty much have just gains to roll in. So despite not making our assumed interest rate, our actuary anticipates that we'll still improve our funding status to probably eighty-one to eighty-two percent. And that's great news because we haven't seen that level since two thousand and two. And we're well off our lows of about just under sixty-four percent funded in two thousand and nine. We also expect our market value of assets to get pretty close to three point five billion dollars, which will be a high watermark for us. So how did we get here? And this has truly been a team effort. The, you know, I'll state the obvious and say the most valuable player on the team has been the market. But I also want to mention two other members of the team that have actually been doing a lot of work behind the scenes. And that's to enable essentially us, when the market takes a knee, the fund can essentially remain stable. And the first one of those team members I want to mention is the Board of Retirement. They regularly review our asset allocation to ensure that we can achieve our best returns while still minimizing the risk to the fund. They've also continued two policies that have been very important to our most recent success. One of them is the fifteen-year layered amortization of the unfunded liability. They instituted that back in two thousand and eight and things were going quite well. And there's been some temptation to take that off, but things are going very well with that. One of the things that they've also done is lowered our assumed interest rate down to seven and a quarter percent. So now Sam Serra is a proud owner of one of the most conservative funding policies in California. That said, the Board of Retirement doesn't operate in a vacuum. And we couldn't have done that without working, you know, with the Board of Supervisors. So that's, you are the next team member that I wanted to mention. The county leadership, which means the Board of Supervisors, the county manager's office, the Sam Serra staff and our actuary work together to understand the short and long-term implications of the policies. So the result of that collaboration that we did is the policies that I just mentioned. So throughout our collaboration, it became quite clear that the resolve to tackle that unfunded liability actually came from this room. So I want to thank you for that. That resolve produced a memorandum of understanding between you and the Board of Retirement that would make the supplemental contributions in order to accelerate our unfunded liability, accelerate the down payment of our unfunded liability. So when Mr. Malpe first approached my predecessor, Mr. Bailey, and said they were interested in making additional contributions, Sam Serra was hard pressed to find another system in the nation where this was actually taking place. So that kind of put us well above our peers. But this kind of thinking was, you know, just unheard of with regard to retirement systems and kind of put us well above, well above our peers with regard to the funding that we were about to receive. So now what I'm finding out is some of the other retirement systems are actually exploring this as an option for them. And as I learned from Mr. Sacco, both he and I and my staff are getting requests for, you know, information with regard to how we set this program up. At last year's actuary evaluation, we were actually able to see the impact of that initial fifty million dollar deposit. So our actuary has a separate line entry for what we call the CSCA or the County Supplemental Contribution Account. And that fifty million dollars actually made a one point four percent difference in our funding ratio last year. So instead of being, we were seventy-eight point eight percent funded, but instead of that, we would have been at seventy-four point four percent funding without that initial contribution. So this year, we'll begin to see contributions in two different forms. One of them being the annual lump sum, which is scheduled to be about ten million dollars. But the other one will be in the difference in the rate called for in the MOU and what our statutory required contribution rate is. So the MOU calls for a contribution rate of a flat thirty-eight percent. Whatever year our actuary calculates what the employer contribution rate ought to be. So the difference in that rate then represents another stream of supplemental contributions that the county will make to fund the unfunded liability. As the UAAL is paid down, the unfunded actuarially accrued liability, that rate will continue to increase. So we'll hold steady at the thirty-eight percent payments, but the actuary every year will calculate a rate that will actually decrease because of the unfunded liability. But the county will hold the payment steady and that difference in rate represents an accelerating down payment or paying down of the unfunded liability. So the impact of the supplemental contributions on the payoff date of the unfunded liability is a little bit more difficult to forecast. And that's because unlike a fixed-rate home mortgage where you have a finite period and a finite debt, the unfunded liability can fluctuate with the market. So it'll go up and down, but it'll be dampened because of our smoothing process. So as of now, our actuary expects that we will pay off the unfunded liability in the year twenty twenty-two, which is about one year earlier than when this program was initially set up. And that's largely due to the market gains and of course, your supplemental contributions. So in summary, because of the favorable market and your supplemental contributions, your commitment to make the supplemental contributions, the things at the fund are improving. And I'm cautiously optimistic going forward. This concludes my remarks, but before I finish, I want to thank a few people. First of all, the Board of Supervisors for your resolve and taking on this unfunded liability issue. And second, a special thanks to Supervisor Pine and his legislative aide, Michael Barber, for spending a lot of time and energy at the onset of this project. I'd also like to thank the Board for appointing dedicated and well-qualified appointees to the Retirement Board. Also like to special, give special thanks to Mr. Malpe and Jim Sacco for their long-term vision and support of Sam Serra. And just want to point out that Jim and our staff worked diligently putting these concepts and words, not only to set up the MOU to make it work, but as we're learning, the devil is in the details and actually making that, or executing that. I'd like to thank Mr. David Bailey, who is unfortunately not here, fortunately for him, he's not here, not only for his ten years of stewardship of the fund, but also for teeing this issue up just before his retirement. And I chose that analogy appropriately because I understand he's doing a lot of teeing up right now. And his, from what I understand, his handicap is actually dropping, but not quite as fast as our unfunded liability. Lastly, I'd like to thank the Sam Serra staff for tackling issues like this one with their professionalism, enthusiasm, and also for the outstanding service that they provide to our members and for making every day a great day to be, and to work at, be a member of Sam Serra and work at Sam Serra. So that concludes my remarks. I'm happy to answer any of your questions.
Thank you. Questions?
I hope it's just to point out that it's a great system. And thanks for your report.
You're very welcome.
And we, we thank you for kind of taking the helm so over to everything. It seems to be just kind of a seamless transition. And the news is so encouraging about the fact that we've made so much headway on paying down this unfunded liability. So.
Yes, we, we truly are the interview of our peers. You know, David mentioned the very first time that he mentioned this at one of his meetings with the other administrators. They looked at him like he had three heads when he mentioned that the, our, our largest employer wanted to pay down the unfunded liability. But, but now it's, we're, you know, clearly leading edge.
If they call and ask for advice, just charge them and stick it against the unfunded liability.
Madam President, if I could ask a question. Scott, I know the unfunded liability is calculated at book value, but you also sometimes calculate if our assets were valued at market, what that percentage would be. Do you have a current number?
Yeah, actually, the, it's one of the things that GASB has required us to do. So the, the two numbers that came out last year when we did our GASB report is that we were seventy-eight-point-eight percent funded, but with regard to the, the present value. So GASB kind of separated the, you know, how you, how you account versus how you, how the actuary views your fund. So we had about a ten percent difference in that. And that ten percent difference is, is kind of the buffer. So when you see that we don't necessarily meet our assumed rate, that's kind of where that money comes from. So as the two numbers get a little bit closer together, the actuarial, actuarial value and the market value will get a little bit closer together.
So you're around ninety percent?
Yeah, we're just, just, I'm sorry, just under ninety percent. So.
Okay. Anything, anything else? Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Well, that concludes today's budget session, but we have a couple of items left, including a consent calendar item on authorizing the agreement with the Samhita County Bar Association for the Private Defender Program. And that is on consent, but if you want to discuss it, we certainly can.
As you have conducted the budget hearings in the past, you might want to take a motion on the budgets that you've heard today.
Oh, yes, of course.
Before you go on to that.
Okay. Motion on today?
So moved.
With approval?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we had one comeback on the District Attorney for Fall, one of his items. I can't read my own writing. Yeah, he was going to talk about a system that he was installing.
Oh, you mean the, the, his case management system?
Yes. Yeah.
Oh, okay. The other thing I had was that we would, we would have the survey of the hackathon attendees.
That's right. Yeah.
And I think the DA was going to give us a report at some point about the Prop 47 data.
Yeah, that's what I can't read my writing. Thank you. Okay. So everybody okay with what we've done today? All right. Now we have, now let's take up an item number five, which is the Samhita County Bar Association Private Defender Program, our contract with them.
I'll move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So then County Manager report.
No report.
Okay. Board of Supervisors report?
No report.
None. None from Mr. Pine? Don?
I want to adjourn in memory of Deacon Michael Edmund Murphy. He died June 11th, 2015, in a hiking accident in Mount Shasta region of Carmel, or California, that is. Survived by his wife Natalie and their son Patrick and his mother, his brothers Martin Murphy, Daniel Murphy. He was born in San Francisco, nineteen fifty-eight, grew up in San Carlos, attended St. Charles School, graduated from St. Francis High School in Mountain View, graduated from Santa Clara University in nineteen eighty with a major in history while at Santa Clara. Mike joined the Army ROTC program and was in this program. Then he met his future wife Natalie. Upon graduation, he was commissioned in the Army as a second lieutenant. Mike and Natalie were married, well, both were, were, well, I guess, well, both were in the military and their son Patrick was born nineteen eighty-eight. Michael Murphy studied for and received his teaching credential while they were stationed in Texas. They spent three years on the East Coast with Natalie teaching at West Point. He taught at Valley Central Middle School in Montgomery, New York. After two years of teaching, returned to graduate school, earned a master's degree in religious studies. And once Natalie was assigned to, at West Point, where the assignment was completed, they returned to San Carlos. Upon returning to the Bay Area in nineteen ninety-two, went to work at Sacred Heart School in Atherton, teaching both math and religion, also coached both boys and girls athletic teams. He was ordained to the deaconate by Bishop John Wester, June 25th, 2006. And since that time, he and Natalie have served at their parish, St. Charles in San Carlos. He wrote many inspiring and thought-provoking spiritual reflections for SF Catholic services, albeit St. Charles. He, this Deacon, Michael Edmund Murphy, touched a lot of lives in, at the St. Charles community as well as in his teaching as well. So we adjourn in his memory. He is, he was just a certainly a very, very giving and spiritual and a great person.
Yes, I'd like to adjourn in memory of Betty Feely. She died on June 15th at the age of ninety. She was a member of the Our Lady of Mercy Parish. She spent thirty years as a school secretary at the Bay Shore School. She was loving, kind and generous. She loved to play golf, bingo, and spent her summers in Twainheart. She was very much devoted to her family and friends. She'll be sorely missed by all of us in our parish. I'd also like to adjourn in memory of Terry White, who passed away at the age of fifty-four. He was a fourth-generation San Franciscan. He had grown up in Daly City, going to Our Lady Mercy and then Westmore High School. He was a veteran of the U.S. Naval Reserve and a retired lieutenant of the San Francisco Fire Department after twenty-four years of service. He too will be sorely missed.
Thank you, Adrian and Don. And that will, we will reconvene the budget hearings at one-thirty tomorrow, Wednesday afternoon.